We're going to call the East Bowfield Township Board of Supervisors meeting May 13, 2025. With a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the Black community.
Make a motion to approve the March 25, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
The move is a proper second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Fire Department reports Department of Emergency Services are in the packet and in the back. We have a presentation by our former State Senator, the Honorable Andy Denman, to discuss the renaming of the road after Zachariah Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Denman, and hello, Ward. Good to be here. The last time I was in this room, actually, it was when there was a PECU hearing about raising the rates. The American Water Company was raising the rates. And I'm sure that wasn't a quiet meeting, I'm sure. But of course, they've raised the rate several times. I have with me two residents of East Bowfield. I think you know Gwen Dickerson. Well, her family's a resident here. The Ruth family has a great deal of property in Ursleton and is well-known. And Sandy Simmons, you're on West Chester Road, if I'm not mistaken. What this is all about is, first, I wanted to explain to you that this township has a tremendous Black history component. That of all the locations in Chester County is something that can be and should be celebrated here in East Bowfield. Unfortunately, there were some tragedies that happened here as well. In 1911, there was a lynching in Coatesville, a very brutal lynching. And in fact, it was one of the only lynchings outside of the South that occurred. The gentleman's name was Zachariah Walker. He wasn't only lynched, he was burned to death, and he jumped out of the fire three times. And the crowd of 5,000 people watched this, pushed him back in. There was even a motion in the legislature to take away the right of self-governance to Coatesville and the surrounding area as a response by the state. In the end, just like in the South, the jury never found the root. The people who did the lynching, who were known, they never found them guilty. The district attorney brought them to court. And so, this became a tremendous controversy. And in fact, if one studies the history of the NAACP, this was really the first case. W. E. B. Du Bois, who was very famous, wrote an article on this. And there was also, in his second, attempted lynching in 1938. And in that lynching, which did take place in East Bowfield, but in Coatesville, attempted lynching, the Black community armed itself, the National Guard was called in. And thanks to the heroism of a great police officer, chief of police, that was stopped. Okay? And if you go through South Coatesville today, you'll see a sign near where the steel company is that commemorates the formation of NAACP at that moment. So, here we are, 114 years later. We have a nation now, which we have to figure out a way to bring everyone back together again, don't we? We have to figure out a way to end this extreme partisanship and anger that has occurred within all of our communities. And so, what I did when I left the center is I created an endowment. And I ran out and raised another $150,000 for it from my political friends. Actually, I got more from the Republicans because they could never give me anything when I was running. So, I do. But, and the endowment is to try to find new ways for us to come together. And we established what's called an annual community gathering. We've had two. We brought every ethnic and every racial and religious group together as one. And the third one is going to be here in the Coatesville area. And it's going to involve Zachariah Walker. So, what are we going to do that day? First of all, he never was given a funeral. We're not even sure if he was buried. And here in East Bowfield, at the Church of Christ, you know, near Ursleton, there's a cemetery. It's a Quaker cemetery, as well as a Black cemetery. There will be a burial service given by the Coatesville Ministerium. And it'll be an ecumenical one. So, he'd be buried in the right way. Following that service, there'll be a delegation of about 10 people who'll go over to the Hepsaba Baptist Church. The person who was accused of killing a gentleman, who was a white police guard, and that police guard, Edgar Rice, is buried at Hepsaba. Walker claimed it was in self-defense. We don't know. But the point is, we're going over to the church. Jack Prans, who some of you might know, for years was the pastor there, has reined him in the new pastor. Again, as an act of reconciliation, to put flowers on Rice's grave, to essentially say, it's about time we understand the past, and we're not going to forget the past. We're not going to hide it, but we're going to come together in unity to do this. Following that, there'll be an afternoon lunch and an afternoon forum at Gateway Church, you know, up in Satsbury, a big church off of Route 30. We will have a forum on hatred, racism, and violence. Because there's a pattern. I mean, the question is, how did 5,000 people stand by and watch this? The same question, you know, I'm Jewish by faith, and how did people just watch the Holocaust when 6 million died? There's a dynamic that takes place. We need to understand that dynamic to make sure it's not repeated again. Now, following that, there'll be a very respectful, silent march that will go from Coatesville to the Lynch site, which is in East Bowfield. You see the sign that was put up there, myself and others, about 10 years. Warden, that, maybe 15 years ago, got the historical museum commissioner to put up the sign. So, what I wanted to make sure is, we're going to ask you for, no, not, no worries, we're not asking for money. That's taken care of by the money that's been raised. But, it is this. Valley Township, and by the way, Valley's involved because the person was taken out of the hospital. The police brought the person who was lynched, the person who had been, who did the lynching, excuse me, the person, Walker, who was lynched. They took him.
We're going to call the East Bowfield Township Board of Supervisors meeting May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five to work with a moment of silent meditation and a salute to the flag. Move along the minutes. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-five Board of Supervisors meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
The move is a proper second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Fire Department reports Department of Emergency Services are in the packet and in the back. We have a presentation by our former State Senator, the Honorable Andy Denman, to discuss the renaming of the road after Zachariah Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Denman, and hello, board. Good to be here. The last time I was in this room, actually, it was when there was a P C U hearing about raising the rates. The American Water Company was raising the rates, and I'm sure that that wasn't a quiet meeting, I'm sure. But of course, they've raised the rate several times. I have with me two residents of East Bowfield. I think you know Gwen Dickerson. Well, her family's a resident here. The Ruth family has a great deal of property in Ursleton and is well-known. And Sandy Simmons, you're on West Chester Road, if I'm a research, right? What this is all about is, first, I wanted to explain to you that this township has a tremendous black history component, that of all the locations in Chester County is something that can be and should be celebrated here in East Bowfield. Unfortunately, there were some tragedies that happened here as well. In nineteen-eleven, there was a lynching in Coatesville, a very brutal lynching. And in fact, it was one of the only lynchings outside of the South that occurred. The gentleman's name was Zachariah Walker. He wasn't only lynched, he was burned to death, and he jumped out of the fire three times, and the crowd of five thousand people watched this, pushed him back in. There was even a motion in the legislature to take away the right of self-governance to Coatesville and the surrounding area as a response by the state. In the end, just like in the South, the jury never found the root. The people who did the lynching, who were known, they never found them guilty. The district attorney brought him to court, and so this became a tremendous controversy. And in fact, if one studies the history of the NAACP, this was really the first case. W. D. Boyce, who was very famous, and wrote an article on this. And there was also in his second attempted lynching in nineteen thirty-eight. And in that lynching, which did take place in East Bowfield, but in Coatesville, attempted lynching, the black community armed itself, the National Guard was called in, and thanks to the heroism of a great police officer, chief of police, that was stopped, okay? And if you go through South Coatesville today, you'll see a sign that, near where the steel company is, that commemorates the formation of NAACP at that moment. So here we are, one hundred and fourteen years later. We have a nation now, which we have to figure out a way to bring everyone back together again, don't we? We have to figure out a way to end this extreme partisanship and anger that has occurred within all of our communities. And so what I did, when I left this center, I created an endowment, and I ran out and raised another hundred fifty thousand dollars for it from my political friends. Actually, I got more from the Republicans because they could never give me anything when I was running, so I And the endowment is to try to find new ways for us to come together. And we established what's called an annual community gathering. We've had two. We brought every ethnic and every racial and religious group together as one. And the third one is going to be here in the Coatesville area, and it's going to involve Zachariah Walker. So what are we going to do that day? First of all, he never was given a funeral. We're not even sure if he was buried. And here in East Bowfield, at the Church of Christ, you know, near Ursleton, there's a cemetery. There's a Quaker cemetery, as well as a black cemetery. There will be a burial service given by the Coatesville Ministerium. It'll be an ecumenical one, so he'd be buried in the right way. Following that service, there'll be a delegation of about ten people who'll go over to the Hepsaba Baptist Church. The person who was, he was accused of killing a gentleman who was a white police guard, and that police guard, Edgar Rice, is buried at Hepsaba. Walker claimed it was in self-defense. We don't know, but the point is, we're going over to the church. Jack Krantz, who some of you might know, for years who was the pastor there, has reined him the new pastor, again, as an act of reconciliation, to put flowers on Rice's grave, to essentially say, it's about time we understand the past, and we're not going to forget the past, we're not going to hide it, but we're going to come together in unity to do this. Following that, there'll be an afternoon lunch and an afternoon forum at Gateway Church, you know, up in Satsbury, a big church off of Route thirty. We will have a forum on hatred, hatred, racism, and violence, because there's a pattern. I mean, the question is, how did five thousand people stand by and watch this? The same question, you know, I'm Jewish by faith, and how did people just watch the Holocaust with six million died? There's a dynamic that takes place. We need to understand that dynamic to make sure it's not repeated again. Now, following that, there'll be a very respectful, silent march that will go from Coatesville to the lynch site, which is in East Bowfield. You see the sign that was put up there, myself and others, about ten years, more than that, maybe fifteen years ago, got the historical museum commissioner put up the sign. So what I wanted to make sure is, we're going to ask you for, no, not, no, don't worry, we're not asking for money. That's taking care of the money that's been raised. But it is this. Valley Township, and by the way, Valley's involved because the person was taken out of the hospital. The police brought the person who was lynched, the person, the person who had been, who did the lynching, excuse me, the person, Walker, who was lynched. They took him to the hospital, okay? No, he wasn't, no, I mean, he was dials at that point. A crowd came and dragged him out of the hospital, and the lynching then took place, a little down, further down Strode Avenue. So what Valley and Coatesville agreed to do, we hope East Bowfield will do the same. On top of the sign that says Stroud Avenue, it'll be another sign that doesn't change anyone's address or anything like that, just a sign that says Edgar Rice Avenue. If you go into Coatesville, you'll see they've done that several times for Dr. Atkinson, who established that hospital in the aero segregation in his community. And in Valley Township, they've done a similar type of sign for Calvin Grove, who was a very famous boxer. And so we simply ask, we ask you to give us permission, just like the other two townships have voted unanimously to do so. The only expense is, I suppose, a street sign, but if all three townships can get it together, and your Public Works Department to put it up. And I'd just like to make sure that we have some comments. Gwen, do you want to say a couple of words, and you have something else, too, that you're planning for this township?
Thank you, Andy. And again, thank you for allowing us to come this evening. I, as Andy mentioned, my maiden name was Ruth, R U T H. And we have, our family has a very long history in this township. My great-grandparents, Samuel and Maria Louisa Ruth, actually purchased twenty acres of property here on what is now East Rokeby Road in eighteen eighty-six. And they, that was property that had previously been owned by a gentleman by the name of Daniel Lukens and Susan Pierce, very interesting. So they purchased that property, and they had a small farm. There was a gentleman who lived across from them, who, by the name of James Fulton, who had a part of an underground railroad station on his property, a safe house for slaves. And he formed a relationship, from what I understand, with my grandfather, with my great-grandfather, and encouraged him, when he was ready to sell his property, to sell some of his property to purchase it. He was able to do so and purchased a hundred and seven acres from Mr. Fulton. Ironic, a gentleman who a few years before had been a slave himself, was now owner of property on which there was an underground railroad station, which had, in fact, been instrumental in helping other slaves to their freedom. So as you can hear, there's a long history. As Andy mentioned also, the Church of Christ, which is located on Route eighty-two, was founded by the same couple, Samuel and Maria, my great-grandparents, and they had their first service there in eighteen ninety-three. Prior to then, they were having meetings outside in, we call it the Triangle Grove, across from Triple Fresh, under the trees. A lot of the Quakers in the area saw them worshiping there, were impressed with these young folks, who at the time were twenty years of age when they first began doing this, nineteen and twenty. And they afforded them shelter during bad weather and allowed them to hold meetings in the Quaker Meeting House and in what is now called People's Hall. So they held their meetings there, worked hard. My grandfather, in addition, having the farm, also started a threshing business, and he did contract threshing for other persons in the area, for other foreigners in the area. So they were well-known in the community as very hard-working, industrious young people, and were encouraged by the support that they got from the community. So as I said, property ownership of about a hundred and thirty acres of property in the late eighteen hundreds, and some family members are still residing on some of that property, which is on the east side of eighty-two, about a quarter mile south of the intersection of Do Run and Buck Run Roads. So that's some of our family's story, and my grandfather was one of their twelve children. His name was William Chester Ruth. And he became a businessman and an inventor. One of the things that he invented that all of us are very grateful for, I'm sure, is what was called the cinder spreader, which is now the salt spreader that spreads the salt on highways during the winter. And all of us who have to drive in bad weather are grateful that there's something out there that allows us to get some traction. But he had that patented in nineteen thirty-four and sold a hundred and fifty of them to what was there called Pendi, the Pennsylvania Department of Highways. So very rich family history, very proud of our family. Thank Andy for helping us to open some doors to make many people aware of some of the contributions that folks have had in this community. I started what's called the William Chester Ruth Legacy Project to recognize my grandfather's contributions, but also to encourage young folks, because my grandfather really didn't have any formal education. His parents were busy working and trying to care for their family, but education wasn't one of the things that they were able to offer them. And he said his only regret was that he didn't have benefit of an education. So what we do with our project is to not just speak about what he and others have done in the community, but also to try to encourage young people with scholarships, mentorship, connecting them with others, particularly in STEM programs, because although they didn't know what STEM was then, that's in fact what he was doing, science, technology, engineering, and math. So I thank you for your time. We're going to be holding a tour of East Bowfield Township, our legacy project, in September, and we're going to People's Hall, the Meeting House, we're working with them, the church, of course. We're going to educate about Zachariah Walker, because by then his remains will be buried in the Church of Christ Cemetery, which was chosen because of its proximity to the lynch site. So that's coming in, in September. It will be the last Saturday in September. We will be getting information out to everyone, and I would certainly hope that you'll keep that in mind. Thank you.
Sandy Simmons, you want to get, Sandy is also a long-term resident here, and one of the, I just wanted to make, the reason I'm doing this is to let you know that there are citizens of this township who are working with us on this project, and so it's not like someone, it's not like citizens from outside. This is a East Bowfield Valley Coatesville-based project, and this is a type of information which is important, I think, to be shared with any Board of Supervisors, and you're the third township we're doing this with, our city and two townships. Sandy?
Well, Senator Denman would ask if I would come to this and indicate that the effort he was making to recognize Zachariah Walker. And I said, that's wonderful. I read the, I said, I read the book, No Crooked Death, and I said, and when I went to the Justice Center in Montgomery, I said, Coatesville was represented. There was Zachariah Walker and his container of soil. And I said, Coatesville, if nationally they can recognize Zachariah Walker, then certainly we in East Bowfield can. That's it.
Thank you.
I'm not, I've been in the city for thirty-five years. I live on fifty, thirteen, West Chester Road, and that's it.
Finally, to put this all together, what Sandy was referring for, referring to the Equal Justice Initiative, as Museum of Montgomery, Alabama, where over forty-two hundred jars are filled with the soil from the forty-two, over forty-two hundred people were lynched in the United States. And mostly African-Americans, but there were several Jews who were lynched, several Italians who were lynched in New Orleans. So lynching is an extreme form of violence, and as a result of the Zachariah events, the state of Pennsylvania was one of the first in nineteen twenty-three to pass an anti-lynching law. And the United States did not pass its anti-lynching law till the nineteen sixties as part of the Civil Rights Act. Murders against the law, of course, but no one was ever convicted of a lynching. It's time for us to all come together, and what we're, and that's, and we're purposely saying that the person who was killed during that lynching, I mean, excuse me, who was killed as a result of Zachariah Walker's action, whether it was self-defense or not, we don't know, he'll be honored, too. Let's stop all the fighting. Let's understand. As we approach the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the Declaration of Independence next year, it's time to reaffirm all of us. I don't care what our political party, what our ethnicity, what our color is, what our religion is, it's time to reaffirm the aspirational values of this nation of equity and justice, and that's what we're all about. That's what makes America such a special place. So if you can support the putting up to the signs, we'd be very grateful, and thank you for giving us this time. Yes, Mr. Nebraska?
I missed it, and I apologize. What name do you want on this above the
It would say Zachariah Walker.
Which section of the road, on Strode or on eighty-two?
It would be on Strode. Each township would put up two. Valley has the shortest amount of space.
I was just, I thought it picked up on, I just wanted to clarify.
No, absolutely, and it's up to the township where they would place it. And, you know, there'll be, we appreciate your hospitality, and hopefully that day you also will be along with Valley, it'll be welcoming everyone into the community. It will get national recognition, but it's going to get recognition in the best light. People are looking for things. Aren't there at this moment in time? Bring us together, and we have this, a select leader stand up and create that. Yes, sir?
Andy, thank you, and just for clarification, I think there's the Walker sign, then there's also a sign for Edgar Rice, and are there two different locations?
No, there's only the sign, what we're doing, the sign is for Zachariah Walker along that road. What's happening is Walker is buried in Hepsaba, right up the road here, and because they were doing this event for Walker, after talking with Pastor Krantz, Jack is the chaplain at the prison, you know, been a leader, and we're going to see the new pastor, is that we will come and flowers will be put at the grave of Edgar Rice, too. And one last comment, by the way, if Edgar Rice had been the police chief, which was supposed to be, but politics got in the way in Coatesville, and they appointed a lazy police chief who never moved, who didn't go to the hospital, if Edgar Rice had been the police chief, this lynching would have never taken place. So, you know, so this is in no way anti-police. This very broke police is saying that all lives matter. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Crye, this will have to be by a resolution we can prepare for.
We want to prepare for our company.
So we'll get a resolution in process, and we really want to thank you, and it's a great thing we can talk.
Thanks to board. Thank you for coming together to help on this.
Pardon us. Do you have a sample, a resolution?
Yes, I'll send it to, I'll send it.
Uh, next on the agenda, we have interviews for the board vacancy positions. And before I kind of describe anything, we want to thank all of the candidates that applied for this position and came out tonight. You know, you're giving up your time, so we really, really appreciate that. Scott had suggested, and we'll leave this up to you guys. Scott had suggested that each applicant answer the question in less than two minutes. So each question would be at a lot of time of two minutes. But there are, we have eight candidates, six, excuse me, we have six candidates and eight questions. So two minutes, the possibility exists, well, not possibility exists. The fact is, we could be here for one hour and twenty-eight minutes listening to our candidates, but another way of doing this is being real concise, getting straight to the point, and giving you a bully pulpit for one minute, you know, and just, you know, give us that message. So we provided you with these questions, and so we're just asking you to you to do that. It would be greatly appreciated, and we're looking forward to hearing from everybody and giving you the floor. And the order that I have here first is Ms. Deborah Stoff. Ms. Stoff, would you approach the podium?
How do you want me to go for this kind of?
General introduction yourself, and then we say you can hit on some of the thoughts there and the questions that we agree.
Yeah, Deborah Stoff, five-year, almost five-year residence, four and a half. Currently serving on the planning commission, and in terms of my career, I am a network designer inside the construction industry, mostly residential, always working with designers, homeowners, and architects, so I'm always collaborating to get a finer, larger budgets and timelines and everything like that. So I'm really used to looking at budgets and Jella, if you will. You take a little from here, you can put a little there, like you can move them around, and that, there's always questions that come up, and always surprises that come up that you have to be prepared for. But you're also working with different people who want different things, and you have to find a way to blend them to work, whether it's the budget, or the timeline, or the actual mechanics of making something work. So that's kind of, kind of combines a few of these at once, I think. In terms of other community experience, I worked for an architecture firm and was in charge of putting together a showhouse, which benefited hospice center in terms of putting the whole thing together, and my husband and I, also for a period of time, grew food for the western, the western county food bank. And aside from that, I saw there was additionally, so I just kind of went around to some other local places and said, hey, what do you have to offer? I'm willing to pick it up and bring it. I think the biggest thing for me is ask more questions, always ask more questions. What else do you need? How else can this be done? Is there anyone else who'd be willing to help? Do you have information that makes this, you know, easier, or can you tell me why this is so difficult? And you ask all the questions, and then you can kind of back up and see a more clear path to get something done, whether that's getting other people involved, or finding a middle avenue that kind of blends a bunch of ideas together. That, whether that's the showhouse, or the planning commission, or my job, that's just kind of how I think it really works. Well, in terms of seeking the vacancy, I think the largest thing for me was being more open about the questions being asked and the transparency of information from the board and the committees to the public, whether that's streaming all of the meetings, which you're doing here tonight, or doing an upgrade to the website where you can research information as a person in the community. I think the communication could really stand to be improved, and I think that also means in the meetings, asking the questions out loud that a board member does silently on their own beforehand in preparation. I think it's important to sometimes ask them in front of the public as well, so that the public gets clarity on how you can, who you can. General. I think that's kind of it. Do you have any questions for me?
We're going to run through the ten.
What is, I'll ask the first question. What would you hope to accomplish while you're on or appointed? What would you hope to accomplish? Like, what is your priority?
I, knowing that the township building is a really hot button for a lot of people, and kind of the background in what I sit in every day in construction, I think it's really, really, really important to make sure that the process along the way is very open about why the township is doing certain things, and also asking the questions in the design process about the budget, why it is what it is, can we tighten it up, can rooms be more multipurpose? Do the materials have to be what they are? Why do they have to be what they are? Is it a code issue? Is it a design issue? Those things are very different, and I have found that sometimes architects, because they're so ingrained, and engineers are so ingrained in the process every day, they don't always realize that those that don't do that every day are maybe not aware of something that has to be done because of a code issue now that's been upgraded. And so being involved in that and asking all of those questions and then taking them back to the town. And so being involved in that and asking all of those questions and then taking them back to the township to make sure that they understand it, and and can we just keep, keep it really tight? Is there, you know, a way to do that?
Thank you.
Good? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stoff.
Next up, we have Mr. Paul Martin.
My name is Frank Martin, I have been a resident of East Fowlfield going on close to twenty-five years now. Um, I have previously served not on a township board or on a committee, but as a full-time employee and staff member here at the East Fowlfield Township Building. I once upon a time was our township treasurer, and I took over being the treasurer at the point in time where our township was a known bankruptcy. Um, so part of this has to do with, you know, having experience in handling different situations where you have contentious board situations, where you have a vote of three to two. Um, particularly in that specific instance where the township was initiating the tax for the first time, was an extremely contentious issue that brought out hundreds of people to South Brandywine Middle School, including lots of, uh, very well-known residents here in the township. Um, one of the great things is, I don't care if my way doesn't win, because there's no, what is best for the people is what is best for this township. And if the people of the township are saying, these are the things that we want, and these are the things that we don't want, what I would like to do as a interim township supervisor is be that type of voice. I am active in social media, I am active in the township. Just because I went into hiatus after I left working here does not mean that I have been disappeared or unaware of what is happening in the township. I have watched the budgets, I have a lot of questions, which is why I am running not just and asking to apply for this interim township supervisor position, but I am already running as a candidate for the township board in the fall for the next year. And some of the things that I'm interested in is, first of all, financial transparency. When I was treasurer, we had an entire financial transparency page that has not been updated. We spent thousands of dollars on this in order to make sure that our residents were able to know how much money was going out, when it was going out, and was able to be updated on a monthly basis. I would like to have accountability inside of our organization. There's a lot of times, at least when I worked here, that this person or that person, this person or that person might be responsible. And in every business I've ever worked in, there is someone who's accountable for all things, and that is extremely important. My background is mostly in accounting, finance, business administration, marketing. I spent over twenty years of my career doing budgeting, forecasting, accounts receivable, payroll, uh, insurances. Um, I am extremely familiar with the second-class township code, I'm extremely familiar with PSATs. I am very familiar with how these township meetings are run, and I also know that budget inside and out. And I miss it, I miss being able to ask the different questions, but without being in the position, I kind of let the new people come in and let them do their job, and thank you for serving our municipality and being our township treasurer. It's like I thank the board for coming in and continuing to do their job. Um, critical issues, uh, one of the reasons I'm running is, one, I definitely would like to slow down the process of this township building. It seems to be escalating very quickly, and from all the feedback that I've been hearing, it's, that's a lot of money. That is a lot, a lot of money that the township residents are being asked to put out for this building, and a lot of the feedback is not in support of having an extensive municipal complex. Now, being that I worked in this building, and I worked with the diesel trucks next door, I don't say that there's not a need for a township building, however, I don't think that the community is in agreement. If I'm under the correct assumption, the township planning commission is backed under doing the comprehensive plan, is that correct?
Starting the process.
Starting the process. So I believe that the township be, should be running its plans and its missions based on the comprehensive plan. After, for the past ten years, after reviewing the entire comprehensive plan, I don't see most of the items that were requested and sought out by the community as being done and completed. So I would like to get back to the basics, follow our comprehensive plan. Re-look at our ordinances, because a lot of them are out of date. I have mentioned this for the past ten years, the thing has not changed, we have ordinances that are outdated. Hooting and hollering, I don't even think that's still a problem here at East Fowlfield. We need laws that apply to today's day and time and not putting in special laws for the sake of putting in special laws. We should be getting rid of laws that have no business and purposes nowadays. So. I don't know, I'd love to work with you guys, I've worked with many of you guys in the past in different capacities, sometimes as my boss, sometimes as a resident, sometimes as a gentleman on the planning commission that I've had the, we're working with. And honestly, I'm a type of person that I like to extend olive branches. I don't like to fight, but I will fight for what I think is best for the residents of this township, which is what I believe all of you are up there to do in the same mission terms. So I appreciate your time and I appreciate your consideration. Do you have any questions?
Someone else's turn.
Someone else's turn, not it.
I asked a question last time, so.
I think it's fair just to, if it's kind of the same question, so it ran as the same, it kind of asked, what, what do you hope to accomplish? You may have covered a little bit of frame, but if you want to.
Yeah.
In a nutshell.
In a nutshell, um, I want to help slow down the process of getting the building pushed forward right now. We have a vacancy on the board, that should be determined by the public voting on two new board members in the fall, or re-electing a board member and having a new board member. There is too much online going on, and when I'm going out canvassing, I'm not getting good feedback. I don't know what everyone else is hearing or what they're noticing, but even on the East Fowlfield Township Community Forum, people are in a riot over this. So I'm saying I'd like to see it slowed down until you have a full board elected fully by the public, not just by an interim person that you're putting in, see that slowed down until you guys can have that all together. Um, and then again, transparency, I can't wait to look at the budget. Budget season is right around the corner, and that is my forte, and there is a lot of questions about where money is going, why is the money going those ways, and I have a lot of history on why we are in the situation that we are in, and it's sad.
Okay, next up is Mr. Eric Romal.
Good evening. Yes, Eric Grant's been here for sixteen years, and, um, I was thinking, as I was listening to both speak, um, there's a lot of things I could say. I, I have been, uh, thirty-four, just about thirty-four years as a economic development specialist for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Um, I've worked on consolidated and, um, comprehensive planning for communities pretty much in the entire Northeast. Um, I worked through New York City for about ten, fifteen years in the upper area, in the outer corner, developing and redeveloping towns and helping them with their planning, building municipal buildings, building, uh, community centers and things like that, so I did for quite a few years. Um, I worked, um, as a, uh, first web manager for Republic of HUD back in the early two thousand, so I worked on the communications side of it too for many years, where figuring out what to communicate to the people, what to communicate to the public. So I've done that, I've done economic development, I've done, um, construction projects. For the last ten years, I have been a construction manager for HUD, where I've managed, um, multimillion-dollar projects and the actual construction process, the contracting, all of that aspect of it. So when I look, look at all those things that I've done for all those years, then you ask, why would I want to work, you know, in, in, uh, the town here? If you pay attention to the news, a lot of federal employees have changed their, uh, job status in recent, I'm one of those people. And so now I'm a changer of career, and I'm looking at what can I do to give back to my community in a different way. So that's what I would like to do, like bring my skills of operations, planning, um, efficiencies, construction planning, all of that, you know, economic development to the community if I could, help in that way. You know, I've done other things, um, in the community, working from being a coach of kids, you know, in baseball, uh, to, uh, being an elder in my church board down in Coatesville, I mean, I've, I've done a lot of things in the community in different ways, but when I think about my greatest skills, it's what I've done in my job. And I like to bring that to East Fowlfield, because I, I look at what you guys are doing, I think about the municipal building, the things that you're trying to work on planning, I could bring a lot of experience to that to help go through that. I know it's not a, a long-term period, but in that time I can really bring some ideas and things that help within the process. There are a lot of different ways I could go with answering these questions, but I think to answer the one question, uh, what I would like to see happen, I agree, communication is to improve to the public, and I think that the overall planning process, um, we have to be smart when we're doing, I, I've been very tired in my sixteen years living here, looking at all of our communities around here, overbuilding, not planning properly for the, uh, infrastructure and things that need to be done. And so I'd like to bring my knowledge of doing that across the United States to East Fowlfield. And that's simply what I would like to offer. Any further questions?
Thank you.
I answered all the questions, I think that was all of her questions, so.
But I did owe five minutes.
We appreciate that.
Two minutes and forty-six seconds.
Well, I should probably talk a little. Mr. Romal, you're, you're not limited, uh, from your HUD work, are you?
No, because, because of what I said before, I have separated.
I got you, okay.
And so now I can actually do this, I couldn't do that before, I have those restrictions. So now I'm in a situation where I can actually bring to bear what I know. I am, I'm sort of retired.
Does that mean retired?
I was forced retired.
Okay, forced.
But I need to get another job, obviously this is not that, but, um, I have some time on my hands right now, but I'm looking to do that other job. So, anyway, so, you know, I, and even if I didn't get this, I'd be willing to consult, you know, things like that, so you kick that in the back of your mind. Well, we have a building committee here for volunteers, well, there we go, so we can look at all the different options. Did I just like cut myself out of this then by saying that? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Shane Floyd.
Do you? Let's see here. Name's Shane Floyd, uh, I've been in the township for just over five years, uh, so I'm one of the newer residents, obviously. Um, I have not been on any boards or committees, uh, I think it's pretty apparent why I'm seeking the vacancy position. Um, obviously I'm running for supervisor, one of the two available positions. Um, and this seems like a good segue into that, there is an opening that needs to be filled. Community or volunteer experience, uh, I did spend several years at CYWA in Coatesville, uh, doing whatever they needed done, whether it was painting or cleaning floors or helping with the food drives. Um, and I do volunteer with the Healthy Kids Riding Series in Coatesville on, uh, five Sundays in the spring and five Sundays in the fall. My, my work experience has been pretty broad, um, I've built fighter jets in Texas, I've worked at Ernst &amp; Young in Manhattan, um, and just about everything in between. I'm an industrial engineer, uh, by education, and, I mean, I live and breathe process improvement, efficiency, productivity, uh, regardless of what the end product of the job is. Um, I think that's something we definitely could use here in East Fowlfield, I know we've joked a little bit on a community group about an EFT Doge department, um, but there's, there definitely is some, uh, some, some, there are budgetary issues. Uh, I was very vocal, um, I went through the budget at the end of last year with a fine-tooth comb. Um, there were a lot of questions that could not be answered or were not answered well. Um, I think there's a lot of fluff in the budget, and it just gets put into different buckets. Um, and that fluff was confirmed by, you know, calling multiple people of those buckets to see what their uh, raises actually were, what the rates were going up. Um, and it was not in line with how much money we were putting in those budgets, and I know part of the answer was, well, if we don't spend it, then we don't spend it, but that's not really, you know, I mean, we got to zero out a budget. Um, but if we don't need to tax the taxpayers for the money that we're not going to use, that's a whole other story. I think the big things, you know, that I've been very vocal about over the past eighteen months or so are, uh, I don't feel like residents, including myself, are being represented by board members. Um, I think the bag ban was, uh, the, the case in point, um, that, that you guys made very clear that even though everybody in here was very vocal about, uh, not wanting the bag ban or thinking we need that, it was pushed through anyway. Um, so my, my number one thing would be to actually represent residents, right? And to try to make, you know, as, as other candidates have said, candidates have said, um, have better communication, make things more transparent, uh, you know, if there's a, if there's a three to two vote that I don't approve of, I don't approve of it because residents don't approve of it, so there probably shouldn't be three votes to begin with. Uh, but that's, you know, each supervisor's own prerogative, how they want to handle the votes. Um, but to me, if you're not representing the residents, then you're not doing the job the right. This is like the worst interview, I'm sure, because it's like, if, if, if I want to get this job, you know, if I want to get this job, I'm not saying the right things, but I'm saying the truth, right, this is what I'm going to do, this is what I'm running on in the fall, right? It's, I, I think people are kind of sick of being railroaded, uh, with whatever your agenda is or whatever you want to get done with your eight-plus-million-dollar building, um, not having other options, ordinances like the bag ban, uh, permits and fees for things that aren't even inspected, um, there's, there's a lot wrong, and, you know, like I said, uh, process improvement, productivity, efficiency, um, that's what I live and breathe, so that's what I plan to bring to the township.
So you would listen, I think we asked, like, those kind of, that's a synopsis of what you would try to accomplish under that umbrella?
I, I, yes, so. Yeah, so, I mean, bring, bring more technology, there, there are plenty of ways to reach out to residents, there are plenty of ways to open up. You know, I know we need a new website, and part of that new website could be more and better communication with residents. Hey, here's, here's an idea, we want a new township building, it's going to cost eight million dollars. Well, eighty percent of people say, absolutely not, that's, that's where you start from, right? Um, hey, we could do a smaller two-million-dollar building, that's sounding a lot more comfortable, right? But, but this, this interaction with the township, other than, hey, come to a meeting and be a part of the process or be on a committee, right, I don't think it's enough, I don't, I think people are busy, people can't come here, but, you know, I mean, it's, it's the information age, we have social media, we have, uh, websites, we, you could send out postcards, I've said this multiple times. It, I think the township building is something big enough, a big enough deal, I think our ordinance for bag banning was a big enough deal to send a postcard to everybody's house and say, do you agree with this, right? And that is it, right, I mean, that is democracy. But if you don't want to do that, and you don't want to see how residents feel, and you don't want to vote based on what the residents want, I don't think, I don't think things are happening the way they should be happening, and that's why I'm running.
Thank you.
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Okay, next up, Mr. Jerome Biggs.
Yes, hello there. Yep.
Sorry, I was looking.
I'm, I'm, I'm coming, I'm coming to you from, uh, from, uh, good old Dublin, Ireland. I am here on vacation. But yeah, I, I, um, I have been a township resident for, uh, over forty years, and thus I, I do have a vested interest in, in the township. I have worked in the community, uh, for just as long, I, I am a pharmacist. I ran the local Rite Aid down in Thorndale since nineteen eighty-five, until I just retired this past May. Uh, so now I do have more time, you know, to spend, to devote to the township. Um, I know a good many residents from living here so long, and because of working in the community, in fact, there's a lot of my neighbors, some of my neighbor families, they worked for me when they were teenagers, uh, so I, I know quite a few of the neighbors. I am currently an alternate member on the planning commission, and I have completed courses, uh, by the Pennsylvania Municipal Planning Education Institutes, in both, uh, community planning and also in community zoning. Um, I am also on the township building committee, and it's actually been brought to my attention, there's, there's a lot of, uh, there's, there's people saying that this committee just wants to build a big expensive and extravagant building, and that's part of the reason why I asked to join it, because, uh, I, I believe that we need a Because uh, I in, I believe that we need a new township building and a new police station. But uh, it it doesn't have to be something super expensive or extravagant. I I think with common sense, we can, we can get together and we can build something that we can all afford. I have, I've also been a member of the Parks and Rec Committee and volunteering there for the past four years. And uh, I also attend meetings of the Westchester County Council of Government. Uh, I do want to say, I, this is just my opinion, but. I I believe that the candidates that are currently running for the position this fall. Uh, that they should not be able to be selected at this time. Now, this is just my opinion, but to me, it would give them an unfair advantage. Over other candidates that they're running against. And it would allow them to use a temporary position as a chance to actively campaign and to grandstand. And uh, I am not running in November, so I will not be doing that. Uh, I will be impartial and I I will do what I believe our residents would like done. With both common sense and without so much negativity. Um, and I'll also be able to attend all the meetings and everything now that I'm retired. I mean. I'm in this one and I'm three thousand miles away. I'm very community oriented. Uh, I'm accustomed to working with the public. I've been doing it for years. And I'm dedicated to the improvement of East Fallfield Township. And I certainly think I'd be able to to work with the other supervisors and uh, and with the township alike, with the public to. Uh, do what needs to be done.
Jerome. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, you have a question?
It's Ted, yes. Um, what we asked the other um, candidates, what would be your priority? If you were appointed during the term, what would you want to accomplish the most?
Well, I know it's on, I don't, I would only be there for a short term. But uh, I mean, the building, the building commit, uh, working to. Make a common sense uh, building that's not extravagant or anything. Uh, would would certainly be a goal of mine. There's also certain things that I look at. Uh, certainly the way we collect our taxes, I think is something we can improve upon rather than using the company that we use. And also uh, improving our website, I think would be, I think our website is way overdue. For for renewal and everything. I mean, there's a non, there's a number of things that I would like to see done. Uh, you know, if if it's something I could, I could work on, I would, I would love that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jerry. You got anything else?
No, not, not unless you have any other questions for me. I'll be glad to answer them.
Well, that case, drink a pint for me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
You're welcome.
And uh, last but not least. Ms. Claire Small-Macalvey.
First off, I just want to thank you for the opportunity for uh, allowing me to interview for this um, for the position. Um, I've been a resident of East Fallfield Township for thirty years. Um, I raised my three children here and they. All went through the Coatesville School just during them. They are all very successful uh, professionals. Um, I previously, I'm serving currently on the uh, Parks and Recreation Committee. I was originally the secretary and I became vice chair and I've been a member of that committee for three years. But other volunteer positions that I've held in the community included, um, you know, keeping the books at my son's baseball game. I was the uh, booster club treasurer for the Coatesville Field Hockey, um, girls' field hockey. Uh, team. I um, coached my son in basketball at the Y. Um, I volunteered with the Girl Scouts, with the Cub Scouts, um, a part of a group. Uh, as part of my work for um, an art exhibition called Art Ability where we. Um, uh, it's a jury art exhibition within our, our hospital for artists with disabilities. And I volunteered on, in that capacity for the last twenty-three years. So um, previous community or volunteer already explained that, uh, what prompted me to seek the vacancy um, position. Um, you know, I I know, you know, to Jerry's point, I understand his, his um. Outlook on having a, a candidate for November running or applying for this position now. But I'm a municipal uh, government novice and for my uh, own education. And um, experience, I thought it would be something good to do. Whether I win in November or not, it's really immaterial. I just want to be part of this uh, this community. There's a lot of big things going on. Um, our new township building, the school, uh, we have roads to be concerned with traffic. Um, and I just really feel like I can be an asset um, to the board. And I enjoy these people. I've, I've worked with them on in in multiple capacities and. Um, I think it's important uh, to be a team player. And whether or not you agree on everything that's being discussed, you agree to disagree. And in terms of contentious votes. That type of um, negative energy or discussion takes place behind closed doors and not publicly. I always support each other as a team. My work, I I work in a large hospital system. Um, I am responsible for about seven hundred employees, um, and a budget, managing a budget of about thirty-four million dollars. And expenses, revenue and expenses. I've been part of large scale construction projects in Concordville, King of Prussia. Um, in many sites, I've had the opportunity to work with the architects and the uh, project managers on those projects. So I think I have, I mean, a physical therapist by background, but um, I've learned a lot. Uh, about um, construction projects and what things cost and code and all of those kinds of things. So. I think I can bring some uh, value to the board. Um, as I said, in my work experience and other committees, I. If I don't, if I'm not a team player every day and I don't listen to the people every day, I'm never going to get anything done. Um, you know, we have seven hundred employees, seven hundred different opinions about how things should be done. And when we need a large scale decision made. I tend to approach it by doing a risk analysis. So I'll look at things like, is it a high risk, um, or low impact type of decision that we're making? Is this something that is a low impact? But a lot, you know, but high, high risk and and vice versa. So, um, things like. The township building, that's a, that's a pretty big deal. Um, it has high impact and there's higher risk associated with it. So. Um, you know, I I think every decision that we make for this township, we should look at it from a risk analysis standpoint and. Way out the risk of benefit before we um, land on a decision. Listening to the residents, but I think the residents would be more agreeable to the decisions that we make that they understood the why. And so, providing data and statistics and reasonings and concrete evidence as to why we're making the decision helps the community, whether they like it or not. A better understanding of what has to be done.
I personally think you covered all the points. In closing, I think you kind of covered, when we talked about the general accomplishment and moving parts of your background.
Yes.
And I think all, all six folks, I think, have covered the same amount of ground and topics.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire.
Thanks to all of our candidates.
So again, we want to say thank you to all of the candidates who have come out here and uh, volunteered. Here to share your information. Please know that uh, this board uh, plans to choose. A person to. Assume the vacated position that will be placed, uh, if the board allows. That will be placed on the uh, I think that's what, the May twenty-seventh?
Uh, that's our next meeting.
Yeah, the May twenty-seventh meeting, we plan to appoint uh, a supervisor.
So what are we making the deliberations at the May twenty-seventh meeting?
Designing deliberations subject to the Sunshine Law.
So. So this is a process question. We have six candidates. My understanding is, Mr. Cry, my understanding is. The board has to discuss. Election.
In public, so.
Public. We can do it tonight. We can do it at a future date determine.
Yep.
But I think we, we need to be clear to the six applicants, what the next steps are.
Yeah, so the, the board can certainly discuss tonight. They can't discuss an executive session, so a warm load of you all can't. Three of you can't get together to discuss it with more of you. The, the way the Sunshine Act works, there, there are provisions for executive sessions to discuss the appointment or uh, employment of folks. But this is a carve out to that exception meeting. Any deliberation you, you do has to be in public.
We could have a deliberation now and maybe not take it to a vote, but then we could continue it. And then at the next public meeting, continue the, the deliberation and then take it to a vote.
Yeah, whatever your pleasure.
Point is, point is, all the conversations the board is going to have regarding this position has to happen in the public.
Yeah. So. As a board. I mean, you can individually talk to, talk to the candidates or people who.
Well, I'm willing to talk about it now, babe. I also.
I just, I just have a question. Could you give your definition of deliberation?
Well, we would talk about, we have six candidates that we just talk about. This is, I mean, I mean, this doesn't happen every day trying to, you know, interview somebody like in the, in the, in the public forums. That's, that's why Mr. Cry just declared, but how? How the process working? Is there, is there any reason why we shouldn't deliberate at this point?
I'm, I'm just confused. I mean, we had folks who came out. I wrote extensively on the skills and qualifications.
As did I.
That I heard. So I just, I would just like more clarification on what. How do I deliberate these folks in front of you? What do you mean by deliberate?
Well, well, I'm asking. We've, we've had comments. We had to deliberate in public according to our solicitor. I did hear Mr. Cry say we could go talk to the candidates on our own.
Individually.
Individually.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, which, okay. But I don't see any reason why we're delaying the deliberation to interdate.
Question, Mr. Cry. When the twenty-seventh comes, I was prepared to come in and ask for a motion. Or throw out a motion to choose one of these valuable folks. I mean.
But how do we know you've deliberated? If there's no public discussion, how do we know there's been conversations in front of the public? And not behind closed doors like the Sunshine Law does not allow?
That's the exact point I'm trying to make.
We all came here this evening to talk about this position, so.
And I respect that. So I need somebody to tell me again, how do we deliberate?
It could be just to, excuse me, it could be just a discussion amongst yourselves to either. Particular, particular candidates you like or qualities of candidates you like and you want to consider. And tonight, doesn't have to be the be all and end all, because that would be obviously when you come back in two weeks to uh. Enter in a motion.
Yeah, Mike, it, it, because usually, usually we have like a motion. Right, by term, I mean, usually a motion that kind of lays out. And then it's a, a, a public disc, a board discussion, the public input. It's pretty cut and dry, paying the bills, buying new materials. Here we're talking kind of like of a, you know, we're selecting. Uh, someone to fill an elected position. So we just can't make a motion, insert person X. And then start deliberating, because that would just, that would just be nonsensical.
You, you could. I mean, that, that's how, that's how it happens a lot, isn't it?
But we, what you're saying, we, we could just, we could talk about the candidates here without an emotion on the table. And then see where the conversation takes us.
Yeah, that's, that's your pleasure if you want to do that.
Well, I mean, my, my.
Note though, that the one, the one caveat, the, you know, the, the walls around you. You as a group can't get together, three or more, you can't get together with any one of the candidates to discuss.
Yeah, we, we, we have to deliberate at these advertised public meetings. Well, I mean, one suggestion might be, we have six people. I don't know if we could somehow maybe discuss kind of a ranking to try to help us win out. The six, I mean, we're lucky to have so many candidates. It's, the hard part is picking, taking someone we can all agree with.
I, I, I refuse to rank any one of these folks that came in here tonight.
Well, we are by deciding who we're going to pick, deciding who we feel is.
You have a question?
I would say, start chatting amongst yourself. Keep your voices up so everyone can hear. Maybe jot down questions you, additional questions you have about each person.
Okay.
You're going to take it to a certain point and stop. Because you're going to finish at the next meeting.
Okay.
And then it's up to you if you're going to stay after to talk to that candidate that you have questions for, or. I mean, contacting them between now and next month. I don't know if I started to hide from the Sunshine Law.
Well, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Well, okay, well.
And then, second question brief. Do you want to hear anything from any of us about this?
I, I think we should. And, and.
Even brief.
And since I was having a lot of trouble with it. If you don't mind, I, I'd like to start.
But, but I like the point of order.
I don't feel comfortable deliberating tonight because I would, I'd like to take the time the next two weeks to interview. Personally, myself. That's where I am, so I'm not.
And my input is, I'm not sure in our deliberation process, I think we should think real clear about whether. Whoever the public is here should be part of the conversation, or it should just be the forum is talking. That, you know, we are the.
So before any votes taken, there has to be a period of.
There has to be a period of, okay, so the, the public is entertained, allowed as part of the, the legal process.
Yeah, and we have our, we have our general public comment at the end of the meeting, but before the motion is entertained. You know, it has to accept one now. What do we always do?
Well, here's my deliberation. I think, I think one of the factors that can be considered to help. Winnow out the six great candidates, is that four of them are running for office and two of them aren't. And I asked my fellow supervisors if that sways you in any particular way as to who you might want to fill the inner part. Four people, four, four people have said they're on the ballot. Two people have said they're, they're strictly not running for office. That's kind of a little litmus test we've been looking for.
I took notes on everyone, so.
So we're not going to deliberate about the six people that came tonight? In any conversation whatsoever.
I don't, I'm not ready to. I don't, it seems like you are, but I'm not ready.
Well, I, 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 I don't know who I want yet, but I, I want to hear from my fellow board members, so that we as a board can make a decision.
I just told you, but you're not accepting that.
You told me you took theirs.
Yeah, and I said, I'm not ready to deliberate tonight, so.
Then will you be ready to?
I said, I want to meet with the candidates on my own.
So you want to do your own personally?
Of course. We all have our own votes, right?
So Mike, any one of us can talk to the candidates between now and the next meeting?
Yep.
That doesn't seem fair.
So we should expect the call from one to four supervisors? We might expect to hear from one to four supervisors for individual interviews instead of deliberating?
I think, I think what Kat is trying to say is, if, if any of you need to talk, feel the need to talk to any or want to talk to any of the candidates, you're certainly welcome to do it. You're, I don't think there's any expectation that the, the six folks here should expect six, five, four calls from. Each of the different supervisors. You can certainly talk about tonight, or you can think about it, roll things over, talk to them individually, do your own research, background.
You could ask more questions now, right?
I mean, you could ask more questions now, or more that they think, I mean, these questions were ones we, we put together to kind of put together. About their general framework ideas. But the meeting in two weeks is going to be that same opportunity to get it ready together. Hear what people think and then there's got to be a motion. The, the way that the, the motion practice works, it's not a, hey. Let's all put our votes in for somebody, because that will, you, we would never reach them. You need three of your votes to choose somebody. So the way that it's structured is, there has to be a motion to appoint person X. And then a second of that motion and then there's a voting, discussion of course on a public comment and then discussion of a person. So it's not necessarily a ranking of every, of everyone or kind of a straw poll vote for everybody. It's typically more, here are the by thoughts, here's the person I like, or really, here's a motion I made to appoint this person. Second, discussion on that person.
And that might take more than one motion to get to them. At the process.
Yep.
So i- if I could, I want to ask real quick, if it doesn't happen at the next meeting, I know uh, Joe Hepburn, I believe, was the vacancy board person. And I think he has to recuse himself because he's running for magistrate. Did, did you have any discussion with him about that or do you know how that worked?
I haven't, but um, so to, to give you the schedule for everybody, so. May fourth technically was when the last one was, uh, when John Neil. May fourth technically was when the last one was, uh, John Nielsen's vacancy was deemed accepted. So thirty days from then is when we have to appoint somebody. So that'd be June third. So if at the next meeting, this board doesn't pick, can coalesce around somebody. The options would be either to schedule another night to come back. Or to then kick it over to the vacancy board. If Joe, and we can reach out to Joe in the meantime, if Joe has to recuse himself because he's running for a different office. We'll need to know that now because before we make that, any kind of motion to, or not make any motion. We would need to select someone else for the vacancy board.
Can I just ask a quick question? So if you hold off deliberating until the twenty seventh, as you said, you come back, that would give you what, like? About a week before you're required to fill that position and or then switch it over to. The vacancy board, thank you. So my question to the board right now is, and with all due respect. Why are you having difficulties just discussing and deliberating right now as opposed to extending? Yet another situation where we could be now backed up to an even greater deadline.
Personally, I feel your question, I want to reflect on everybody, what I wrote and I possibly meet with people, so. I don't want to make it hasty with.
But I don't think it's disgusting because we still have the rest of the meeting to go through also on top of it, so.
So like, yes, I like to reflect on.
Which, again, I fully appreciate, but I also am saying that since you're not making a decision now. Further having conversation who may, let's say, Al may bring up a point that you didn't even think of. And somebody here could answer that for you, or I, one of the candidates, excuse me, could answer for you. Could ultimately create less of an issue down the line if you got the question answered now as opposed to extending another two weeks. Where people may not be available to you, uh, people may have different schedules that just don't seem to work out and you all are here right now. Your candidates with, I mean, the gentleman's in Ireland right now. People are here. They expect you as a board to do your due diligence. Whenever you need to, but since they're here, why not take the opportunity?
And in due diligence, you should reflect.
I'm not disagreeing with that, but why not reflect after the discussion is happening and to get more information?
Thank you.
You have it right there, but there's four of us, just like any vote. All right, the night could be two, two. That's the reason why I put for five, what time we had three. But if you want more, maybe the other three would be willing to vote the night.
We're not voting tonight.
We're not voting tonight, isn't it?
I know, but I'm just answering that question, so adding expectations that. I hear you and everyone understands about deliberating while everyone's in the room and it makes sense. No one's disagreeing with that. Managing expectations or putting forth what we expect. Whatever form of deliberation or lack thereof happens tonight is what it is. The expectation would be next meeting on the twenty seventh, we would deliberate further. And vote. Because of previous questions, I personally am inclined to not vote for someone that is on the ballot in the fall. That's just my personal opinion. I weigh, I give more weight to the two candidates. See Mike's deliberating. This is, that's good. No, I, I, that's good, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. So again, and to the other question is, uh, Bonnie, um, I will not be reaching out individually to any of the candidates. What you've described here tonight is more than sufficient. You've submitted resumes, applications. I don't need to bother you with individual and individuals.
Thank you.
So that being said, let me, let me, let me put a bow on what, what, what I've been doing. I, I have reached out to, I think I've spoken to everybody or had an opportunity. Just to say hello and just give me your spiel. And I've listened to everything tonight. So I, I've had plenty of time to think it through. I, I know a lot of these folks just because. People on planning commissions, people on park rec, I've been involved in these things for the last ten or fifteen years. So I know the candidates pretty well. Like Mike said, I'm leaning towards trying to stay out of the political arena by trying to pick the interim person, which would fill basically a six month slot. So that it's not in any way part of the whole who's voted for who thing. That being said. These two of us now before are saying that that's kind of a, a gatekeeper. Not that the other people aren't qualified. Obviously, there are problems that they feel they are, but I wish them all the best. But I think, on the other side, our, our chairman stepped down suddenly. And that was in March. It's now, we didn't have a meeting in April because we couldn't get a quorum. That was unfortunate. It's now May thirteenth. We're going to have a second meeting in May, running on Memorial Day. People have plans. All the six candidates have showed up and called from three thousand miles away. I think we owe the candidates a decision tonight if we can reach one. There, I delivered.
Thank you.
You're right. For once.
Yes. I'll make a gentle comment. Anyone who doesn't get this spot. I think there's plenty of people, and there's six people that would be fantastic to be on. Either the building committee or the planning, especially the building committee. And I think we should consider. The more residents that get on the building committee, that we subtract some of the supervisors. I know some will probably place in there because we had not enough people. But I've seen a lot of vocalization about. The building committee starting to look like the board supervisors and it's. Jesus, it's looking a little hinky.
How is that legal?
Connie, I, I, I just want, as one supervisor, I don't want to acknowledge Connie's comment. I, I agree with you thoroughly. And then I saw, I was a throw a hand in the back.
Yeah, according to the sunshine law, how is it legal for three of our township supervisors to be serving on the same committee? Isn't three board members deliberating in the same room considered a quorum?
No, so. In that capacity, they're members of the building committee. Any of the building committee meetings or public meetings that anyone can attend. They, they satisfy the sunshine act just like any BWS.
So it just looks funny.
It means it's a little funny to you.
That's my perspective. It doesn't look funny to you.
I, I.
High five. Thank you.
I'd like to deliberate a little bit. I am really excited. About the diversity. Of the candidates. I had a chance to get on the board. Two thousand, I believe, was sixteen. Uh, I was a. There was a Republican board and I was a lone Democrat. So, but I'm excited about the women that, I'm excited about the women. That have applied for this position. Once this board was very, very diverse. So I am excited about that. And I just, so I just want, I want to mention that. Because it's important of, you know, a woman's perspective. And I'm excited about that. So I just want to leave that out there. Uh, although all the candidates. Offered a magnitude. Of skills, different things. But, uh, there was some very. I was impressed with everybody here tonight.
So maybe we can start with your top two contenders. My top two contenders are, uh, Mr. Jerry Dickinson and Mr. Eric Raymond. For the comments I made, for the growth not pursuing office, I think he's the one that will make an extra interim supervisor.
Who, who did you say?
I suggested Eric Ramis, who's here, obviously Jerry, who called in overseas. Um, I feel they're both qualified for the interim position. I think that they're also outside of the election cycle. I think there's a both. More than a credentials to make them fine candidates who fill the position sooner than later. Sadly, sadly, John Nielsen left us in a very tough spot. And I would like to get this resolved so that we can be a whole board, Mr. Lambert, like you spoke of. And have a full diversity and have a five people that can make votes. Because a four member board, every time we meet, there's more and more chances for us to be deadlocked. Because we're having sadly a two to two split. So the sooner we get a fifth member at the wheel, at the helm, the better for this township.
Are we finished delivering?
Well, no, that was, that was my suggestion to start moving the ball forward.
I, I have nothing more to add.
I already told you.
I'm good.
Uh, I make a motion. That we select Jerome Dickinson as interim supervisor. With the period ending at the calendar year twenty twenty five. Do you want to do a second? Of course not. I tried.
Thanks, Al.
Please, one.
Come back to the next meeting.
Maybe we'll get something done. If we have a course.
If we have a court.
Is everyone available for that next meeting?
Yeah, is everyone available? Because I know we have to make it before May fourth, which means we would have to advertise and plan for another meeting.
June fourth, June third. They already have a meeting scheduled, the, the twenty seventh. Okay, thanks.
We do, and provided to the quorum, which would be three supervisors that we can actually come out there.
I did ask because I know there's, thank you, or, uh, what's that holiday? One more.
Well, we're running into May because we couldn't get our act together in April.
All right, I think the point's been made.
I think the point continues to be made.
Okay. Treasurers report. Here's our motion. I make a motion to approve the March thirty first, two thousand twenty five treasurer's report as presented. Second. They move with the proper second. Any questions or comments? Call of the vote?
Aye.
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 Here's our motion. I make a motion to approve the April thirty, two thousand twenty fifth treasurer's report as presented.
Second.
They move with the proper second. Any questions? Or comments? Call of the vote?
Aye.
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 Payment authorizations. Is there a motion? I make a motion to approve the payment authorizations for the period of March twenty sixth, two thousand twenty five. Through May thirteenth, two thousand twenty five in a total amount of eight hundred and fifty eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy six dollars and ninety six cents.
Mr. Treasurer, is that number correct?
I believe that is the incorrect number.
That is the incorrect number, Mr. Lambert.
I apologize, six sixty nine.
Oh, wait a minute, you're talking about, oh, sorry. Six hundred and sixty six, excuse me, six hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty six dollars and eighty four cents.
Second.
They move with the proper second. Any questions or comments?
Yeah. Just brief clues notes. What are the things we're paying for? Not full descriptions, just what they are. Eight equals six sixty nine.
Can you repeat that, Connie? I'm sorry.
What is adding up to six sixty nine? Not full description, just what you're calling those categories of.
I'll, I'll give her a treasure, I'll give her a treasure a chance, but it's like for a month and a half, so it's bigger than a normal number. If that helps you get drums around it, because we did meet last month, we covered it.
Yeah, just looking for what, where the money's coming from?
Roughly about a third of that is going to, uh, relating to the Coach Villarreal School District permit company that we use, Keystone. We have a split with them, fifty five, forty five for that building permit, so. That's roughly a third of this number and it is two months.
You say building permit?
Yeah, for the Coach Villarreal School District, Devon Elementary School.
Oh, okay. All right. Just curious, thanks.
So we're helping pay for part of the school?
No, they, I, I, they have to pay their building permit.
The school paid up.
It's a six, it's a six digit figure, so it, it, it looks big in the budget, like since their permit fee.
But we just passed it on.
Well, uh, we, the township gets a certain portion of the calculated permit fee. And then there's another portion that goes to the firm we hire who actually does the installations. So they have to pay the fee all once, this one time while the sum is coming, right, Tim?
Yes.
But that's money coming in and then money coming out.
More money came in than went out. Fifty five, forty five.
Can we just ask really quick, I, what number are you on? Sorry.
Sixteen. Yeah. Page two. Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Call of the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Dave.
I'm in the township award, the low bid, name out three hundred one thousand, nine hundred thirteen dollars, sixty five cents. For Long's Asphalt, the twenty twenty five paving project.
Hold on, Al. Um, is, is, um, Scott?
Pat, can you hear me?
Yeah, I didn't want to do either manager's report.
I could provide a little background, uh, if it's helpful.
I realized Scott was there.
Yeah.
Sorry, Scott, didn't mean to take you thunder.
Not a problem. Uh, everyone can hear me, okay?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, so just a little, I, first, I'm sorry I can't be there tonight. Uh, just a little background on the road paving project that we had three bidders for the project. Uh, Long's Asphalt Innovative, Innovative Construction and John Duraco. Uh, Long's Asphalt was the low bidder at three oh one, nine, nine thirteen, sixty five. Um, the list of roads is Mount Carmel, Ramsey Road, Malinew Lane, Elizabeth Bedford Drive. We did remove Upper Gap Road. Uh, if you recall from the last meeting, there's construction on activities on that road. So we removed that one. We added Rebecca Lane. Um, I just wanted to point out. A few more facts here. We budgeted, um, for road paving for this year, we actually budgeted four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Um, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, of the project. We budgeted from liquid fuels and then seventy five thousand dollars in the capital fund, uh, for paving, so. Pretty substantial here. Um, I look back to, uh, like two thousand seventeen, I wasn't the manager at the time, but we were only spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A year on road paving, so we're obviously investing considerably more than that. And last year we spent three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars, almost three hundred and eighty six thousand dollars on road paving, so. We are, we are catching up on, um, years of neglect. Um, we are spending considerably more money than we did, um, in, in years past. One more fact that I just wanted to mention here, um, not, not related to road paving, but we are. Um, we are projected to replace the Culver pipe on Sawmill Road this year. Uh, that project will be funded with a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant. So I am recommending that, um, we, um, we had budgeted additional monies in the capital fund that I recommended at the last meeting. Uh, we don't have to make that decision tonight, but we use the money budgeted in the capital fund to pave Sawmill Road, uh, which is showing its age. So again, we got three bids, uh, all three were competitive. We got great pricing this year for the two thousand twenty five road paving program. Uh, I think we should all be happy that we're going to get a lot of road paving done this year and there's a recommendation letter from the township engineer in the board's packet.
Second.
Al made the motion. Mike's made the second. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah.
What do you got?
First of all, did they, uh, did the township manager get the recommendation from the roadmaster or if you want to call him the road foreman? And also is the possibility, you know, he talks so fast and I wish, you know, some of you talk a little slower. I, I think my hearing aids are pretty good, but they're not good for speed talking. But in reference to, can we get the list of roads that are going to be done? Repaid, evidently you make an emotion for the contractor, which is fine, but. I heard the township manager talk about the, uh, roads, but it was so fast, I didn't recognize. I know some of the roads.
Yeah, so to, to repeat that list.
Years, I do know.
But let's kind of repeat the roads for you.
The, the list of roads again is Mount Carmel, if I understood your question correctly, uh, Mount Carmel, Ramsey Road, Malinew Lane, Elizabeth Drive, Bedford Drive. Um, and Rebecca Lane.
Some of our old, uh, development roads.
Yes, sir.
From developments.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And I, and I know just from discussions, I know Justin is our.
Well, I know.
Chief, I, I know Public Works is, is lockstep in working with our engineer to pick the right roads.
Yeah, well, like I said, most of those roads are in developments, old developments or new developments. Most of them are no development, especially the Sawmill Road one.
Yeah.
All right. I just didn't know we're doing any other major roads of the township, you know?
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Call of the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, um. Alright, next on the list, uh, approval of bid for Newlandville Traffic Calming Project on Route eighty two. Um, if I could just provide a little bit of background here, uh, if you recall, the board of supervisors rejected the bid. Um, this went to the board back in March, and at that time it only had one bidder, it was JBI Group, and their bid was two hundred and sixty nine thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Um, the board thought that bid was too high and rejected it. Uh, we now rebid, we, we then went and rebid the project in April. Uh, this time we were, uh, fortunate to receive two bids. Um, the, uh, JBI bid again, their bid was two forty seven, eight, nine, five. And then we received the low bid from Construction Master Services. Uh, that bid, uh, came out to be one, one hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and twenty one dollars and eighty five cents. Um, the township engineer, uh, recommended we award the contract, um, to the low bidder. Just a, a couple other things that I wanted to mention about this project. Um. The, um. Uh, I know with the Newlandville master, Newlandville Village Master Plan, if you look in there. Um, if you take a look at that study, that was done back in, I, I guess we finished it in two thousand twenty. Um. The residents of, uh, Newlandville and the task force identified speeding as a major problem. Um. And so this will, this will address, um, one of the high priority items in that Newlandville Village Master Plan. Um. So we are, we are moving forward here. Um, the project, for those of you that haven't, um, been to a recent meeting, uh, the project will. Entail, we will be installing two traffic calming, traffic calming medians. Uh, signage, striping, and transverse pavement markings, which are. Um, basically gentle rumble strips. Uh, one more thing I did want to mention here, and I'm putting out a lot of information here, um, unfortunately, a motorist was killed. In front of the Pico substation last weekend. Um, this was on eighty two, right in Newlandville, so. Uh, my understanding from talking to the police chief, excessive speed was the cause here, so. Um, we are taking a proactive approach to reducing speeding in this area, and of course, the hope is that we can prevent future accidents. Um, from occurring. Um. There is an engineer's recommendation letter in the board packet. Um. Awarding the contract to, again, Construction Master Services, the low bidder at one fifty six, one twenty one, eighty five.
Make a motion approving the low bid for the Newlandville Traffic Calming Project on Route eighty two, Doron Road, from Construction Master Services LLC. The amount of one hundred and fifty six thousand, one hundred and twenty one dollars and eighty five cents, further recommendation of the township engineer, Panoni Incorporated.
Second.
Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments?
Lots of questions.
Are you talking about?
Well, you only get one, so.
You only get one question?
Try to sum it up.
Can I ask one that might get rid of one hint?
Go ahead.
We've asked repeatedly for. Other. Location where they put these in. And the pre-installation and post-installation. Numbers and how well they've worked. And later on, how long it generally takes for people to get used to it and then ignore it, and get really good at going through it really quickly. And it was all a waste of money. We, we keep asking, it's one of the reasons why it was tabled last time. And we still haven't seen that information. Probably generated from the gentleman we saw on the screen who told us about it very late.
Didn't he give us this?
No, the engineer said that they would do it before and after study, which it's kind of late to do an after study after it's done, but if they have put this similar. Traffic calming measure in other places, we could be able to look at those before and after studies to determine its long-term effectiveness. It doesn't really help us to do an after study after we've made infrastructure changes. So this is the third meeting that we've asked to see before and after studies, and it's just kind of like brushed off. Because they are available, because the engineer said they do it before and after studies. So I'm not sure why, before we do this, we couldn't just look at empirical data that says whether it's effective long-term or not. And if it's not effective long-term, then find another way to do it without making infrastructure changes and paying a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, whether it comes from grant money or not.
Well, considering someone had a fatal accident last week, I think, um. It would be something that would improve safety down that area.
Is the, is this Pico substation right where this is gonna be put in? Like, it's right there?
Yeah.
It's there, that's, I mean, this is anecdotal. Was that person intoxicated? Did they run off the road? There are a lot of. They, yes, I, I didn't ask if they were speeding or not. Were they intoxicated? Do you know, so, do you know if the person was intoxicated or?
Well, Shannon, it's gonna take a while for the coroner's report to come back, although he didn't have any indications at the scene of the impairment.
Okay.
Alright, real quick, back to there was no question, Scott, did we ever get that information that was requested?
I don't recall the board ever requesting, uh. Something from me.
The board didn't ask, the residents asked. Perpetually.
I'm not sure what's being asked here. I, I know that the traffic calming measures that are being proposed in Newlandville, these are all approved, uh. Traffic calming measures, um, from PennDOT. So PennDOT studied these, uh, these traffic calming measures for years. They reviewed our plans. Um. They spent many months reviewing the plans. I don't think they would have approved traffic calming measures on a state road if they didn't think it was gonna be effective.
Also, the residents requested, um, something to help prevent accidents in that, their area. Remember that from the survey.
Yes. I mean, I Googled just sitting here, and it said traffic calming measures typically slow traffic by two to three miles an hour. But it's a, I think we're asking for a cost benefit analysis here, you know, providing some information. If it's two miles an hour. Maybe it's worth it, maybe it's not. If it's ten miles an hour, sure, maybe it's. More impactful, or if we're gonna spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but it only slows traffic by two miles an hour. But there's another method that we can do that spend. Two hundred and fifty thousand, but it slows it by ten miles an hour, maybe that's better spent money. That, I think that's kind of where we're.
Yeah.
Getting at, we're not saying no, we're just saying.
How?
Right.
At least outside.
I think the four, I always, I'm always be for myself, I think the four of us. Hear your questions and understand your concerns from, from, from. I, I was a civil engineer for twenty five, thirty years. I worked at traffic calming and construction and whatnot, so I'm pretty familiar with PennDOT standards. So I can ground truth a lot of what my manager tells me. What Panoni tells me. When I look at the PennDOT plans, I mean, if you've never seen those plays, it's kind of hard to figure out, but I can read those drawings, and I know that this is. Standard practice, state of the art, appropriate traffic calming measures that provide. What? What gets to your question? I don't think there's like a place where you could pull a paragraph that kind of answers that in the two, three, five mile per hour. But I do know that the township, I think Kat, you were on the committee, Mike was on the committee. We did a Newlandville study for that area, and this was listed as a. Primary. Priority. I've heard Canada's talking about getting comp plan priorities done. Same thing, a comp plan was done with the Newlandville area. This was, this was project one. The residents wanted to do something to slow traffic down. So. I didn't supervise, could, if Philly or contradict me, but I think, I think our staff and our engineer have done all the due diligence. To do the best possible solution, and I think a very cost-effective measure. Our manager can of course talk to the numbers and where the money come from, but. I, I'm sorry, we can't answer those specific questions there, but I think what you're thinking of, I think that, that was all part of the decision process. Maybe it wasn't called that specifically as a cost benefit. But I think, as Kat said, sadly, we, we had the fatality. That sadly just kind of proved the point that people do tend to speed on that curb. And we've spent five years, we, the township has spent five years to get to the point of putting something in place. To help with the traffic calming, to help that our, so our police can then. You know, I just will, we're tool at their disposal there.
Excuse me, are there any other questions or comments?
I do have one more question. What, there was some grant money associated with this. Too, correct, Scott, maybe? Or am I thinking of one of the other twenty seven thousand grants we have?
Yeah, this, this project is fully, we received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants, so that will more than cover this. Part of the project, and then we anticipate purchasing, uh. Uh, certain equipment, uh, as well. To complement this project.
What, what equipment do we need to complement the project?
Uh, the plans call for, uh, speed, there's, uh, speed display board signs. Uh, that will be purchased. And we'll be looking to, uh, spend other money on traffic calming as well for that area.
I know we, we have the speed display boards at other places in the township. Are those effective traffic calming measures?
Chief?
I've received positive feedback.
I mean, is that, is that enough to not need to do an infrastructure change? Could we just put the speed boards there if they're effective in other places?
I think what our manager's saying is he is working with our engineer and our police department to decide. And he's figured out that there's probably some expenditure. That may have to cover some equipment. I'm kind of looking at the chief to see if there's any. Validity to what I just said.
Sure, those, those signs are, are fairly expensive. Uh, I believe they're about four thousand dollars each.
So we anticipate having to purchase a couple. To, to, to help your policing of, of that.
To be installed as part of the infrastructure and the overall plan.
Sounds like they go in and they're there forever kind of thing?
I believe so.
Okay, so the, so our manager's thinking ahead. To answer your question, your manager's thinking ahead to, to make sure we have the money in the future to, to do that traffic.
Well, it sounds like the speed boards are part of the traffic calming, but they in themselves are traffic calming because we have them in other places in the township. But if, if they work. As traffic calming devices and they're four thousand dollars apiece, why do we need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make an infrastructure change? I, they're just questions that it doesn't seem, you said you did due diligence, but this doesn't, it doesn't seem like you did.
I'm not gonna get arguing with you. I'm. Back to the vice chairman.
Are there any other questions or comments? Call of the vote?
Aye.
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 Alright, thanks, everyone. Uh, next on the list is a proposal for, from L and L Restoration for Maintenance, uh, to the Prague Hollow Bridge. Um, just a little information here, uh, the township has a list of priority maintenance items. Um. And, um. These are non-structural, uh, masonry type repairs. Um, of course, if you don't fix it, it could be structural, so the township received three estimates, uh, road foreman is recommending that we go with L and L Restoration. And, uh, their proposal is, uh, twenty three thousand dollars, uh, to make those repairs.
Scott, it's Kat, I have a question. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, yes.
Um, so is that bridge in our township? Because I remember we had a discussion before. With the logo, that it wasn't in our township that we use that bridge as our logo, so I'm confused. With the boundary. If that is. Is that our bridge or is that?
Rock Hollow Bridge is in our township.
It isn't, okay.
Yes, East Vallow Field Township.
You confirmed that then?
Yes.
Hey, hey, Scott. This isn't the covered, this isn't the covered bridge portion, is it?
It's not the covered bridge.
No, it's like the other, it's another like little bridge, as it were, that's not part of the big red covered bridge.
Yeah, Kat, it's not the, um, it's not the covered bridge, if you were, if you were thinking of that one.
Yeah, it's very confusing because we always think of the big red covered bridge.
Okay, I, I think I know where you are now, okay.
Buddy, you got a question?
Yeah, I have to talk to that cousin of mine, we did that bridge. Both bridges and our covered bridge are both damaged by trucks going through them and damaged on. What you were talking about, there's a little stone bridge that takes what we call the race. That where it goes in through the Wilson's mouth. The covered bridge was just done, so what you're, and you're right. And see, most of it's in East Vallow Field, but the exit is in West Marlboro. Alright? West Marlboro and East Vallow Field, and one time West Marlboro said, yeah, on that, but when we plow it. We plow over there, I think come up the other way toward eighty two. That bridge was just done a couple of years ago, so what you're talking about, twenty three thousand dollars for maintenance of it? Is that what you?
The, the, the mason, like a lot of reporting and masonry type stuff, non-structural.
What?
Repairs have to be done.
The stone was done. If you've been down there. Alright, the stone was done on the bridge itself.
It's not speakment.
Huh?
It's not speakment. It's a different bridge. It's not speakment, it's not the covered bridge.
I thought they were talking about the cover.
No, no. That's, that's what I thought, but then Al corrected me.
There's only, huh, there's three bridges in the township.
Yeah.
Two or more on private property.
But it's not the covered bridge, buddy.
They're not talking about.
Oh, you're talking about that?
They're working. Yes. We're, we're cool. Thank you, buddy. Thank you for getting us.
What, that little stone bridge there, before the covered bridge?
I think so, yeah.
Well, that's what I told you about the race.
Yeah.
Yeah. That, that one done when the covered bridge was repaired.
Yeah, it's got some, it's got some nicks and bruises that needs to be fixed.
Yeah, well, if it needs reported, but for twenty three thousand dollars? Huh?
That's the going rate.
Beats the sixty thousand dollar estimate we got from Loftus Construction.
Prices are going up.
I'll make a motion authorizing the township manager to sign a proposal on L and L Restoration. To make repairs to the Prague Hollow Bridge in the amount of twenty three thousand dollars from the township's capital fund.
Second. Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments? Call of the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I have another question. Uh. Are you there, Scott?
Yes.
Do we have to close this, um, road temporarily when they do those repairs there, or how's that gonna work? I mean, not that many people go down that road, but there are some residents.
Um, I don't anticipate that. I, I think we'll, um, we'll make do with split flaggers there. But yeah, I don't anticipate we're gonna need to close that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You wanna talk about the next one, Scott?
Yeah, was there a vote on that? I didn't, just want to make sure. Okay, alright. Uh, next one is resolution approving the D C E D Greenways Trails and Recreation Grant Application for the Community Park Improvements. Um, real quick on this one, we discussed, you know, at the last, a couple meetings, um. Uh, the upgrades, um. Uh, to the park, um, we would be installing poor pickleball courts, a small inclusive. Playground, volleyball court, and parking lot. Um, and this will be done at the township's parkland at the intersection of Go Run and Strasburg. It's, it's a southwest corner there across from, uh, Seventies. Um. The need for active recreation is spelled out, um, especially pickleball, it's spelled out in the township's park and rec plan that we completed last year. And we did receive, uh, multiple letters of support from community members, including the owners of Seventy, so again, the proposed motion would allow, um. Allow the township to, um, submit that grant application to D C E D.
Thank you, Scott.
Um, Scott, I, I looked at the, the plan that you put in there. Um, there's no bathrooms. Are we gonna have like, um. Porta potties there? Because it's a long walk or drive to the main. Public restrooms.
Uh, I think we'd have to discuss that. Further. I think that would need further review. But not as part of this project. There's no bathrooms proposed.
But can we put like porta potties there for the, because you know, handsome things they need? Really?
Potentially, I, I don't see it as a problem.
Alright, thanks. Anybody wanna make a motion?
It's our motion.
Al, you wanna make one?
I'll move the township. Approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash eleven, authorizing the township manager to submit a grant application to D C D Greenways Trails. And Recreation Grant Program in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the community park improvement.
Second.
Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments?
What?
Yes.
Uh, is, what, I guess, what is the total cost of the project? Is, and is this a matching grant?
Uh, right now we're projecting five hundred thousand based on the concept plan, and we submitted a second, uh, grant application to D C N R for two hundred and fifty thousand as well.
So that they're not matching, we don't have to match them?
Uh, there's no township match required.
Okay. Or is it more that you can use the grants to offset your match?
Correct, you can use one grant. Correct. You can use one grant to offset the other one.
Any other questions or comments? Yes.
And maybe this would go with the uh. Further discussion about the restrooms. Knowing that. Even though these people are health minded, this is probably gonna be good for Seventies. And people are gonna wanna walk across to get snack foods, drinks. Is there any kind of traffic? Walkway, safety, blinking light, anything to get people across that road without them getting killed after the workout?
Chief, could you address that possibly?
Any modifications that will be made to the road would have to be approved or penned up because they're, that's a safe highway.
Could you put anything like like a flashing light there or anything that without their approval, like or any sign or something?
You need you need kind of approval for anything.
Or anything, okay.
Right now, the school district has this crosswalk as part of their project for the intersection there.
All four sides are from the school to Seventies?
Schools to Seventies and then a crossover to.
Okay, that's nice enough. That's good.
Okay. Alright, thanks. We just need bathrooms. Thanks, Scott.
Any other questions or comments?
I do, I I never asked is is are these pickleball courts like also tennis courts or they're just purely pickleball courts?
There is.
But the concept plan shows four uh four pickleball courts.
One twenty by sixty.
Yeah, I think the I think the physical dimensions of the basketball don't line up when that. Yeah, it would have to be. It's like on my bank.
Nobody plays tennis anymore. Everyone's playing pickleball now.
That's that's cause it's so easy.
Yeah.
I just had a question. So this is the motion you're proposing is for him to. Write a grant to try and get a grant is what I'm understanding?
To submit the grant.
To submit the grant, right. Um and then. Let's just fast forward to everything happens. It all moves forward. Where do the maintenance costs come from? Once everything is built and you know, and how do we then? Realize like traffic is gonna get worse if more people are using those. You know, courts, things like that. Has there been any questions to the people? Who live in the developments between that area, Branford and Brooks Crossing? Have you discussed that? Um I know there's that gets close to their. Uh their developments gets close to people in their backyards. You don't know who's gonna come.
It's.
Spend time. I guess the question is, did you? Ask those people, do we will be more affected by the amount of people that are showing up or you know?
Good question. My understanding, looking at where the drawing is, it's really up more closer to where Seventies is. It doesn't.
Well, Brooks Crossing is right there.
Well, it's but there's all the woods.
Yeah, it's not that deep out and then walking through there.
I, well, it's all within the hundred. I mean, we have a hundred acres plus thankfully that of that park lane, so. I don't, I personally don't see it as being something that's going to interfere with the residential properties there. The way it's situated.
But have you asked the residents? Like, you know, Shane had said to send something simply like a postcard to even get. The people that live closest to that intersection, who live closest to the park, to get their views on that. Cause I haven't seen anything personally as a resident come to me and say, how would you feel about more people in your backyard now?
Yeah, I think most of, so I think most of the feedback was was generated through the open space plan. I mean, that was like a year-long process. Um. I I don't know if you if if you came out to one of those uh open space park and rec meetings, but um there was a lot of feedback on the active recreation and the need for that. Um at those meetings. We did, we did surveys and things like that in public meetings throughout the process.
I mean, I I'm not being disrespectful, Scott. I'm just saying that you have been in these meetings. I have been in some of these meetings and there aren't a ton of people that show up and. Considering, I don't know how many houses are in Brooks Crossing. There's two hundred and seventy homes in Branford. You know, I'm guaranteeing you those people all didn't show up. So I'm just curious if you.
Oh, no, we got good, we got great turnout for those um for those park and rec uh. For for the open space planning, um for the open space plan. We got great feedback from that. We did surveys and it was tremendous community support.
From those people that live closest is what I'm asking you. Is it from the people that live closest to that intersection? I'm sure you, I mean.
Yeah, that I don't know. There's only a couple, there's only like one or two houses across from that area other than Seventies and they wrote a letter of support. To D C N R because they want people to come into their pizza shop uh after they play pickleball. So.
Again, I can appreciate. I'm all for supporting Seventies. I mean, we do. They live in our development. I can appreciate that. I was asking specifically about the two developments. That are, you know, basically in L-shaped form around the park. Like if you would know what these people wanted, considering it's going to be in their backyard.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if we specifically targeted that that development.
Yeah, the study being township-wide, Courtney. Like we couldn't just try to go neighborhood by neighborhood. So it wasn't broad. Now that we're doing like the the specific projects. I mean, now it's becoming, so if people are concerned, I mean, we're advertising this now. If we get to the point where we have drawings, we're gonna advertise again whether to build it or not.
But is there a way to communicate this beyond what you guys communicate on Facebook?
I mean, it's on the website.
Which I agree, I I think we know though that like.
Live streaming it, so.
Now. But like I'm saying, I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm just saying if you. Want to get more people involved, you have to find a better way to reach out to them. And it could be, I mean, I get, I literally get texts from Honeybrook. From a whole bunch of different locations, just texts informing of board meetings. I don't get anything other than what I see on Facebook or Facebook. That's it. So I'm curious.
And that is a broader conversation about the communication.
Right, the.
Great large.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree.
Any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And next, uh next on the list is appointment of a member to the municipal building committee.
Hold on a minute, Scott.
I'm setting the time.
Taking a break here? Recession?
Wow.
It made eight thirty. We're not a journey like.
She's a student. She just needs a singer.
Oh, I hear. I think this student here is our transient member.
Are you waiting all this time?
No, I was, I was first one there.
Oh, okay.
So so S W is like stormwater management. There's probably gonna be a little hole.
Okay.
There's a lady. You said something, you didn't know. Question, but I mean, it's hard to see the structural idea. It's gonna be like this tiny little thing. Compared to the. Good time, Marty.
From white.
There it's gone. Guys, ready?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. Uh next on the list is appointment of a member to the municipal building committee. Uh we invited Chuck Argu. Is he here tonight?
I am.
Yeah.
Okay.
On down. I'll say, I'll I'll be brief. I know it's been running late. Um so I applied to the open position at the building committee. Just offering up uh myself as needed be. I'm a licensed professional engineer, almost thirty years mechanical doing HVAC plumbing and car protection. Not very exciting, but it keeps me off the streets. Um I have done. Uh similar buildings. The most recent one that I've worked on is the Willstown Township Police Department. Building for whatever that's worth. Um certainly a different budget and expectation for that. Um master plans and the like, and that's kind of the quick and dirty, my CV.
What was that budget? If I can ask you?
Actually, I don't remember that. No, I don't.
And what's the most um for me to ask, uh what is the most depressing reason you wanna join? Building?
To kind of be involved. So I guess I should preface, I'm one of the newbies. I've only been here since December twenty-one.
So what's your pressing reason?
My pressing reason is to um.
The urgent reason you want to join?
Um. My bride. Was elbowing me. Back to participate.
Truth comes out.
To use my my skill set. So uh she's involved. Um we've met her, Chris, to argue. She's on HOA for Philstone Village. Um so she's involved and so I was able to say, oh, I don't need to be involved in the HOA. And I thought I was uh Scott free. We're getting involved. And she said, oh, we got this this new township building coming up. You're a mechanical engineer. You've done similar stuff.
Uh-huh.
You have some expertise. Feel free to share it. We know about.
Do you got my Charles?
Chuck, Justin, Jerry, or Charles. Well, thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
I made the motion to appoint Charles Argu to municipal planning committee. Terminating twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-five.
Second. Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments?
Do you guys have any questions?
No, I saw, I saw.
What, how many does that make in total for the building?
It fills all the official spots.
Seven, yeah.
Well, we recently added two sponsors, right? Was this the committee we added?
Okay.
Yes, when Jerry wanted to come on, we had to open up. Two more spots. He took that one. And Chuck would be taking the seventh.
Any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, welcome, Chuck.
Thank you.
Uh next on the list is um. Approval and agreement with Esri for Arc G I S uh geographic information system. Uh just a little background here, uh we were looking to purchase um. Uh licenses to use G I S software from Esri. Um at the most basic level, we should have uh G I S documentation of our stormwater infrastructure, things like our outfalls. Um this, so this software will help us satisfy our M S four requirement. Um I anticipate um we will uh also use this um G I S data for other reasons as well. Uh if you recall, back in December, January, we purchased the building permit software. Uh there was a citizen problem reporter component to that. And um. This G I S data will allow us to accept location-enabled requests. So if citizens are reporting problems, potholes and things like that. They will be able to use the G I S data uh that we could purchase through Esri um to pinpoint exactly where the pothole is. So. I think this will uh, this will be a step forward for us. I anticipate in the future, we'll also use this G I S data. Um our public works crew will be able to monitor and inspect our township infrastructure and the G I S data will uh. Will help provide an inventory um. The uh infrastructure. So again, nine hundred uh and twenty-nine bucks annual license that will get us access to the software.
Oh Scott, is this na, so this is mapping our geography? Is that what that's doing?
Yeah, I'm not, so I'm not an expert here on G I S. Um I use um, I use some of it through Chesco Views. Um there's, there's a lot of things that you can map. Um you know, again, our stormwater infrastructure, roads, road signs. Um.
It'll allow us to track a lot of our, I'm sorry, Scott. It'll allow us to track a lot of our infrastructure over time. And it'll be in the computers. That'll be there for everybody's future use.
So my question, because I'm not an engineer, right, is do we have to input everything or does it have like uh, it's already like um? Uh what do you call it? Software that already has everything in it? Already recognized everything that we have.
So good question. Some of, some of the, some of the data we have already, we're just not able to view it from the township perspective. Um our sewer engineer has access to the G I S data for our stormwater infrastructure. Um so if we purchase the software, we could actually view uh the stormwater infrastructure.
Are we able to add stuff in it?
We can. Um I would anticipate, I don't know if there's any existing G I S data for things like street signs and things like that. So I would anticipate, um this software would allow us to add data as well. And you know, some of the data is already out there, streets and roads. I would anticipate that data. Well, I know that data is already out there.
Yeah, there's a lot of G I S data that the county gives us for crews.
Okay.
So we don't have to recreate the wheel a lot of all the typical.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to get, I.
We just gotta do our little part at twice.
Okay, alright, well. Sounds good.
I'll make a motion approving annual agreement with Esri, the amount of nine hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the purchase of a license for Arc G I S Pro. And A R D A G S online software for Natasha's general apartment.
Second.
Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments?
Yes, who's who's gonna be qualified to use this or who will be using the software?
That's a good question.
Uh I would anticipate our road crew. Um I'd like to, I'd like to personally learn how to use it. Um but I expect our road crew will use this. Um will likely work with our uh township sewer engineer from McComby. Um they're really the pros on this and they would help us import the data and show us how to use it.
And Scott, I mean, I've used, it's not a complicated. It's really user-friendly.
Yeah, Esri, Esri is really good. They have some excellent customer support. There's a lot of uh software programs. That are included in the cost of the nine hundred twenty-nine dollars. There's a lot we can do with this and um. You know, I think we're, we're obviously in the early stages here, but just having access to the software and being able to use this will uh is a, is really a step forward here.
Are there, are there groups that do this, like the Brandywine Conservancy that, you know, we could pay to do this instead of paying? A thousand dollars a year? Are there, are there groups that do this, like the Brandywine Conservancy that, you know, we could pay to do this instead of paying a thousand dollars a year?
Is this an annual?
I, I can answer that. The, the, to use the software, we need the license. The, 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 the intellectual part comes from the staff, our public works director, whoever. And then our consultants who give us the data. So it's not, it's, it would be counter, it, it would be nonsensical to, to outsource it.
But we're paying for the software.
We pay for the software.
Housework.
And then we get data from the very, you know, the county S G S data sets, aerial and everything.
But you mentioned.
Consultants give us data.
Right. Which consultants are we using?
But, but the real payback is the fact that the road crew and whoever else that has the data gets it in the computer. And then we can manage the township more effectively. Whether the number of inlets, which roads got paved, how many other street signs missing. The, the sky's the limit. Just gotta crank the data.
So Scott, um, piggybacking off of Shane's question, right? So if we, if the, the software wasn't effective after, it's only a year, right? The commitment, we, we didn't like it or wasn't, uh, effective that road crew didn't like it, we don't have to renew it then, right?
No, we don't have to. But again, at the most basic level, this software, we have to do an M S four annual report. And this will at least check one of the boxes that we had that G I S documentation of our stormwater infrastructure. That's, that right there is worth, um, nine hundred and twenty nine bucks.
Is, is there a training cost associated with it or is that included in the fee?
Uh, that's included in the fee.
Okay.
Um, I make a motion approving.
We have.
Okay. Can we?
We did.
We did.
I did.
You got.
Hey, you seconded it, Pat. It's cool. Call for the vote?
Yes, let's vote.
And she's wrong then. Any other questions or comments?
Fine.
Hmm. I'm sorry. Well, you can hear. Motion was already made, so.
I know, but sometimes, you know, we.
Well, you know something?
Emotion.
You're not supposed to correct me. All right? I'm just, I wasn't speaking to the board. All right?
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next on the list, moving along here, um, appointment of a voting delegate to the Chester County Tax Collection Committee. Um, this resolution is simply going to update the first alternative voting delegate from Lisa Ionan, our former treasurer, to Dave Hinbin.
I make the motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty five dash twelve to appoint voting delegates to the Chester County Tax Collection Committee.
Second.
Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. Next on the list is a sale. These are surplus vehicles right here. We have a two thousand thirteen, uh, Ford F three fifty and a two thousand eighteen Chevy Tahoe. These are vehicles that are being retired. Um, we've already, uh, we've already purchased vehicles, uh, to replace. We're just getting rid of these.
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty five dash thirteen, authorizing the sale of surplus property as presented.
Second.
It's been moved with the proper second. Any questions or comments?
Uh, you're curious, who, who are these sold to?
It's put out for an auction. Put out for bid.
Okay. Is that, I mean, that's public?
Yeah, it's public. Yeah, it's on GoDeal dot com, I think is the internet.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. And then, uh, last on my list, I just wanted to mention, uh, to everyone that, oh, I'm sorry. I, okay.
Oh, geez.
Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks. And then last on my list, just wanted to mention that we are now live streaming our board of supervisors meetings to YouTube. Uh, township has a, uh, looks like we were successful because I did log in and it looks like it's working okay. Um, so we are advertising that now. Um, and you can watch, uh, those live streams, uh, on YouTube. The East Fall Field, uh, YouTube page. And that's all I have.
All right. Mr. Kraut?
So the first item on our agenda, legal agenda is the approval of mutual aid agreement. We in the township and the Chester County Police Chiefs Association. Um, this is a kind of a master agreement that all the different municipal police departments across the county are approving to make sure that they're in mutual aid or kind of interfacing, interweaving between the different departments to accept. There's the chief could probably fill in more than I could. Good point. That's right. Sounds like an accurate description.
I move that the board approve and authorize the township manager and police chief to sign the mutual aid plan and agreement to the form as presented.
Thank you.
Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on my agenda is the, uh, approval of a stormwater management agreement for three oh four Martin Dale Circle. They're, they're putting up a garage and driveway expansion. So for you to do that, you need to, uh, get your affirmative approvals from the township. Township engineer reviews it against the township stormwater management ordinance and then this agreement is to accompany them.
Hold on. I move that the board approve the stormwater management agreement for three oh four Martin Dale Circle in the form as presented and authorize the plans to be released or recorded.
Second.
Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's all got. Planning Commission, Transportation Improvement Inventory, report submitted Chester County Planning Commission. Police Department. That, uh, reports have been submitted to board and resident review. Reports submitted from Park and Rec. Uh, is there a motion for this agreement for face painting at the Township Summer Concert?
I make the motion approving two proposals from Jaylen Giles. Is she here? An internal amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars from the Park and Recreation Fund to provide face painting, painting at the Rescue Rally event on May seventeenth, twenty twenty five, and the Star Spangled Bike Parade on June twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Second. Uh, it's been moved with the proper second. Any questions or comments? I'll be curious. Is, is that? Is the face painter providing the township as additional insured or is that going to fall on, uh? Yeah, is, well, I don't. Is, is she coming with the concert or is that something different?
Hey, Scotty, you still there?
I'm still here. I done mute. Well, I'm sorry. What was the question?
The, the, the face painter, Miss, Miss Giles.
Okay.
Is she, uh, is she with, is, is she with the event, like the concert event organizer? Or is she, or is she just face painting on, on her own?
Uh, just face painting on her own. And she, this is not for the concert.
Okay. So. She providing, uh, list naming the township as additional insured?
Yeah, I don't know if that's in the agreement, but we can, we can get that information from her. We can get her insurance information before the event.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Call for the vote?
Aye. Aye.
Public Works Department reports have been submitted. Uh, is there a motion?
I make the motion to hire Hector Aquino. It's a part-time permanent laborer in the Public Works Department and hourly rate of twenty five dollar to twenty two cents, subject to the sentence factory criminal background check and pre-employment physical.
Second. Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Ryan Paradise as a seasonal grass cutter in the Public Works Department at an hourly rate of seventeen dollars per hour.
So I can.
Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote?
Aye.
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 I make a motion to appoint Jordan Thomas as a seasonal grass cutter in the Public Works Department at an hourly rate of seventeen dollars per hour.
Second.
Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments? Call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, Historical Commission, then a request letter submitted regarding America Two Fifty, Chester County.
I, I have something for you. Okay.
You need a change. Lock it up.
I said, you got some. All right. First off, show you. But you can pass a picture. Look at the back of it, too. Helen. She used to be a township secretary for forty years. Please follow him. He lived on the west side there. She did his pencil. She also did this covered bridge. I have a copy of that. And when I got confused on one of the covered bridge, see that little stone bridge in front of it? That's not wrong. It can go by a paw in my place. The reason why I questioned the twenty three thousand. I mean, you know, but and on the back it has the date nineteen oh one. All right. That's the picture of the church. That's the day. It's none. Helen, she did a pencil. Yes. Not only was she this secretary, she did a lot of that calendars for the Historical Society. If you've seen any of those, there's a lot of them.
I have one of those.
Yeah, I, I all the copies back. And, uh, like I said, anybody, I mean, supervisor, six, eighteen. I'm sure the one guy knew that forty years as a supervisor. But, uh, but she was forty years as a secretary of the township. The other thing I just want to give you was Memorial Day is coming up in a few days. Well, okay. Seeing the Memorial Days coming. I got that stone from East Fall Field. You see the stone out there with the names? And not only just Vietnam guys, there's guys from World War Two, Korea from this township. But it's just so happened during that time in nineteen eighty one, when I picked that stone up, I think it was down Rokeby Road or something like, picked it up and had it done every, you know. And, uh, hopefully we can do something else this Memorial Day, you know, we have a park now. We didn't have a park. So that's been a thing. That's what I was wanting. I was just trying to talk about a little bit about this, they talk, you know, the grant monies and[1379.81] About this, they talk, you know, the grant monies and we give money to different forests, you know, which is the main thing for everybody, but it's a lot of historical places in this township that we wanna keep. We lost a lot while Buffalo, they had someone parked in the bottom, got tore down, the Trussell Bridge. I think I have a copy of that, the Trussell Bridge, that tore down. You know, so we don't wanna tear down our historical. And one thing I wanted to bring up, Andy Foul, and the young lady, he used to work up the VA. Oh, the lady, she was just the road, her husband built it. He worked a lot to do it. But, what I'm saying, we have a a cemetery that guys from the VA, a lot of other people from like Chester University came down to fix up this cemetery. It's called South County Cemetery down off the South Calum Route. Developments all around, but the only way to get in there now because of the development is through the PE right away.
Backtrack.
Yeah, well, you can take the P E down. I saw, I, I took a machine back there and cleaned everything off, you know, with a bush hog and all, so you can actually see it. And the other guys did the, the stones, there's some stones back there, and there used to be all church back there. And that's something that we, it's been neglected for less. So it's just not said this is born, even, you know, developed before this. One door and four, and some other ones, they went down there or for that.
We went down there.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, right. But it's quite, you know, two, two or three supervisors, but there's a lot of other people came there to help with breaks, shelter. And that's something that we should keep and keep it cleaned up. So I would like to see either the park. I would volunteer, you know, some equipment. Uh, I know our road department is coming into summertime now, so you're hiring people, there's a lot of mowers, and definitely there's a lot of bank that needs done with the bank mower. So, you know, like we go.
If my memory serves me correct, we found out who the owner of that property is. So then the question is, we're entering on private property.
Wasn't he in Honey Rock or something?
I don't know, if that woods part of the, I'm not sure off that.
The, the owner of that city, there's somewhere up in Honey Rock.
I physically walked back there, a video, video of it years ago.
We, we found that, uh, they said it belonged to a church, all right?
That's true, that's true.
So.
Can we, can we eminent domain it?
So cemeteries, you can't, you can't condemn cemeteries.
Just curious, son.
That, that's actually a carve-out, you can't condemn the cemetery.
You can't what?
Condemn the cemetery.
Eminent domain, is that condoning?
That's condemnation.
Is it? Okay.
Yep, that's one of the carve-outs, you can't condemn church property or cemeteries.
I, my understanding with eminent domain just means like the government would take the property, is it?
That's the same, eminent domain condemnation are the same thing.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, buddy.
We could buy it. If you want to sell.
Uh, the EAC Environmental Advisory Committee, uh, is there a motion?
I make a motion approving immediately environmental, actually meeting EAC on the Thursday, Thursday of every month, it's the second Wednesday of the month.
Second.
Then move with the proper second. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, my question, Scott, you still on the horn?
Still here.
Um, what's gonna cost to re-advertise for the new meeting?
Um, I mean, something small like that, probably a hundred bucks.
All right, good, so we use a hundred bucks a day, a local, make it official?
Correct.
And then just post it on the website?
Yes.
Right.
And any other questions or comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any old business? Is there any new business?
Yeah, I just, real brief, thirty seconds, I just wanted to voice my concern because I, I've listened to a lot of residents and I think the signal used bag, bag ban was a mistake. They can always be changed in the future by whoever's elected. Or this is getting updated, changed. Uh, rescinded all the time. All I got.
Yes, buddy.
Yeah, I'm just, I don't know, I hope it's new business, but it's also old business. It's in reference to that bridge and, and also South Calum Road, the one where the road always breaks off. When Tag was here, you know, we put four hundred tons of number six stone down over that bank.
Hold on, can you tell, which, which one are you talking about? Cause you just said two different things.
I said South Calum Road.
Now you're on South Calum.
That's the road that's broke off and you see all of the cones there. You can only get one, yeah, somebody else coming one way, you gotta give way. That's where the guy took all the trees down too, if you've been down that road, all right? That road keeps on breaking off. I had pictures when the road was done, it was rolled. You know, they put a new road there. One of the problems is, and I'll just say, cause I've been in construction for forty years, I do know that we were supposed to put baskets on the upper side. You can see where the bank is sliding down. We were supposed to put stone baskets up there to keep that from erosion. The other problem is, all the water goes across the road. That's because the inlets aren't clean and Bell Telephone put their boxes up that the water can't give to the inlet. You go down there, you'll see two boxes down there, they're Bell Telephone. They could have dug, you know, jackhammer, put them down lower, so it doesn't affect our drain. We have drains on that side toward the bank. Well, the water's not getting there. Not only that, it goes down to the old Spring House. And Spring House is down near Sawmill Road. The other problem was that road that, that bridge, that five ton bridge that we had, that now closed. The only thing goes through there now is bicycles and motorcycles, all right? I suggested one time, and I suggested the township, uh, manager to put a steel plate there and put concrete barricade towards where the, uh, head, head wall broke off. I know we were supposed to get bids on it, but I hadn't seen nothing there, and that's a seeing that we have Danella doing Hespa Hill. You have Pendott doing eighty-two going down to the electric furnace. You couldn't get by either one of them. The only time they did let, there's a school bus, they had to let the school bus back. But Hespa Hill, you couldn't even get down. You had to go down to Mortonville and up South Calum Road. Eighty-two was blocked up from Pendott doing the shoulders. All right, so our major highways except for going from Parksburg to Westchester was fine. But at one time it wasn't, when they started digging from East Fallfield down to that intersection. So, all I can say is, all the contractors, and I worked for Danella and Hickel Point, you had to be off the road by three o'clock. And there's been times that they hadn't been, four o'clock. I can tell you, from Hespa Hill to Morton, that almost down past my place, which is is about almost three quarters of a mile, traffic was backed up. Cause the people were coming home from Westchester and they couldn't get through. So, that's something where the police department could be addressed to, you know, the traffic problems. And also, the other problem is, they do a great job, they got the signs saying thirty eight, uh, forty miles an hour, and it flashes if you're going over that. I live on Strasburg Road, and I think I talked to Pope. They fly in the morning, especially at night. Strasburg Road is a major road between Parksburg and the county seat. And then, none of yous live on the Strasburg Road. Believe me, you can come down to my house, try to get out. Where do you live at?
I'm your neighbor.
You're my neighbor? What side? The one in the Chad Mellon?
Small world.
I was there when you drove across my property when the truck broke down the other day.
Oh, yeah, that, that's when the truck and, that's another thing. The police department put somebody down at the end of the roof, but they didn't put nobody up the Ramsey Road, and everybody was turning in my driveway and the other ne- neighbor. It was almost an accident. You know, if they would have had somebody up the other end, which I did go up the other end, and told people they had to go down Ramsey Road and come out there on church. So, all right, no, not the big goal, but I, I just, I don't know, I would ask you, how do you enforce those speed signs? You know, that flash up, let's just say, Buddy Rose is doing fifty miles an hour.
They had that sign there.
Yeah, they had the sign, just like we used to have tapes, or hate, but the signs, we'll just say, at night, or out of, out of thirty cars, maybe ten are doing fifty miles an hour. All right, I'll just, I'm not saying everybody goes over the speed limit there. But what kind of enforcement do we have in reference to that?
Esper Road is that, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm guessing you got, I'm looking back to.
So, what, I mean, I, I, I come through there often, and normally, when I come through at night, it's, it's got that blue light, you know, if you're going to speed limit.
Yeah.
Forty miles an hour.
Well, you might be going there, but I can guarantee you, there's a lot of cars that goes more, that blue light stays on, but at night or in the morning, them cars fly down there. Now, his driveway, now, I tell you, the driveway is bad. My other neighbor, cause that turn is right there. All right, I had people hit my stone wall in the past. I had people going through the field at the horse farm. Right, so, we, it's gotta be a way to slow the travel. One time we had speed tapes, and there was a car and one neighbor and the other car down mid-con. And when they went across that speed tape, the other car would pick them up, you know, the tapes told them how fast they were. The only problem, you had to have those recalibrated a lot, the speed tapes.
But I, we, we can't regulate what, uh, Pendott shuts down their construction, generally.
They have.
They're widening the road right now, but I, I was in that back, one of these backups he's talking about, but it was, it was late. So, we, we don't, I mean, we can't do anything.
Well, Pendott puts a speed limit there. Pend, Pendott, you know, has a speed limit there, you know, what the speed limit is. But it, the cars go over, it's forty miles an hour, and basically they go a lot more than forty miles an hour. I just asked you, how do we enforce that? I know how we enforce it before, when we had different, you know, when you had two cars there, you know, I don't know.
I think Chief heard you, he's right here, so.
Yeah, well, you told me to cross you, I didn't wanna.
No, 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 I was saying, I was pointing to Pat, and they asked me, I said, down that way on Strasburg Road. That's from down toward where you live. That's why I was pointing everywhere.
All right.
My wife and I, your honor.
Yep. Uh, any public participation?
Yes. We can kind of skip the Historical Commission and, and the America Two Fifty. And is it possible, why you could read the letter, that, I assume that, um, Joe wrote it? I, I have to say, I don't think I've seen it.
Oh, I, I, I get Joe, um, yeah.
McCormick.
Yeah.
Very light, so.
Oh, is it long?
Yes. It's hard to read. It says that Storm Commission would, would love to participate, but logistically is limited in terms of their ability to do so.
Yeah, we don't have many people, and I think the whole township should participate, not necessarily, as a matter of fact, it should probably be Parks and Rec. Although.
That's what he says.
We would love to help.
Yeah.
I think, I'm sorry, I didn't hear, yeah, I think the message was received by Parks and Rec, I think I copied them on the letter that Joe wrote back, and Parker Rec, I guess will do with it.
And I volunteered, right Scott, for, um, to do like, um, memo or something down, aren't they having, uh, something down in Parksburg, closer to Parksburg?
Yes.
That's a different event, right, Niderman with Lafayette and his route, that's different than America's turning two hundred and fifty.
Are they kind of distinct? I, I got confused by that.
Two different items, two different people.
I mean, but they're not, cause I know the two fifty thing is like, things are happening all year.
All over the country.
They're doing whatever they decide to do, it's not just July fourth.
Yeah.
Like, it's kind of like the year of twenty twenty-six is the year of celebrating.
The whole country is celebrating that. The other thing is smaller but important. Cause I think they're, they're gonna emulate Lafayette going from like Philly to Lancaster.
Yeah.
Someone is gonna wear the costume and all, and originally he stopped at the house across from Weaver's, was an inn, but because it's a private residence with tenants, they won't allow us to do that, so we're doing it in Sotsville instead. Sotsville Inn is not in East Fallfield, so it's on.
It's right there though, it's right there.
The line is through their backyard, and it's like eighty twenty. So, that township, I wanna say Sadmer, can do all they want, but we're not there, we're not in that township. So, I mean, obviously, we can line the streets and wave and cheer as he goes by, but it won't be in our township when it happens. Um, cause that is a totally different event, and I have sadly no data to that event. The woman started organizing five years ago, I mean, she's on it.
Well, Peggy Young did it in nineteen seventy-six. We started from Towerville, and we had a big thing in nineteen seventy-six. And, and actually, City of Coatsville has the wagons.
We had down three thirty, I remember.
I got pictures of that, and I got pictures of East Fallfield, all right, we had it in nineteen seventy-six in East Fallfield.
In Chester County slash the whole country is celebrating.
Yeah.
America turning two hundred and fifty years old, and we have nothing on the calendar.
I think the short answer is, the conversation is happening at the Parker Rec Committee. Obviously, anyone can come and be part of whatever discussion would percolate into an event. So that's, that's where the conversation's happening.
Okay. I wonder, Connie, if you know the, um, People's Hall, if they'll be open by then, if we could do something with them.
Good question. I'll talk to you.
I would be willing to, to participate, and volunteer if you, uh, I mean, you can call me and then we could discuss it. So, that would be good.
I'll get with Joe on that.
Yeah, I'll get, yeah, I'll give you my number after the meeting too.
Yeah, it's, our committee only has three hardcore and
I see.
four to five people who show up regularly. So, there's not a whole lot we can we don't have much to, and I think they pulled us from the budget, so.
That's another thing, we, we should be part of the budget too.
We used to.
Yeah, we used to, and we had stuff with Westchester Historical Society. I know I talked a lot about the ten thousand dollars that I worked for, and that was a two to one vote, I can tell you that now. They get the historical done for East Fallfield, Jane Davis did it. She used to do all the townships. There's a copy over there, we gave one copy to Coastal Library, and there was one copy here that evidently disappeared. But there is a copy in Westchester, uh, Historical Society, and also, it was supposed to be, we gave one of the Coastal Library. I've been up there, and the lady said she don't know where that, so we gave her one copy of that too.
To answer his question, Joe McCormick went to Chester County and copied everything we gave them to be our own copy again, but obviously all our originals were lost during the pandemic and the double employee changes. No one knows where our, we had original deeds, historic paperwork, and it's all missing. I hope that when we move into the new building, someone will stumble upon it.
And hopefully we can find out Coastal Library, they had a hard copy, just like we did.
That was our cabinet.
Yeah.
I know, I don't. We had that whole discussion, I remember, like, where could it go?
Joe's got it on a flash drive. It's the best we can do.
Okay.
You can go back to public discussion, sorry.
And we have a public participation? Hearing none, is there a motion for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Thanks Scott, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Connie, can I go give my number?
Yes.
I think that was, I don't know if that was Andy Donovan's or not.
If you don't mind, so far I come to pick it up at some point.
Thank you.
Good things.
Yeah.
What was?
Yeah.
I don't, does he?
I don't know, Andy was said to be there.
I know, I know, um.
I'll, I'll find out.
Yeah, I don't know.